Can I like to call the media order? We'd stand for a moment of silence in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, Madam Clark, could you hear the roll call?
Jamie Gerardi.
Here.
John Anderson.
Here.
Christopher Bull.
Here.
Peter Hanzel.
Here.
John Gundy.
Here.
Chris Williams.
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray.
I'm here. And the proof of publication, please.
The item for advertising the Tampa Bay Times on April 28, 2022, August 3, 2022, and August 7, 2022.
All right, thank you very much. Um, Dyer, a motion to approve minutes, please.
A motion to approve the minutes from the July meeting.
Second.
Motion is second, any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, motion carries. So I'd like to welcome everybody to this morning, or this afternoon, actually. Uh, we're the Planning Commission, appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and we meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency and we hold public, uh, hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, zoning, rezonings, and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in any, is in opposition to any land development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission transmits a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the appropriate Board of County Commission meeting. For those of you who are not familiar with the, um, they play, the way we normally do these meetings, the, um, there are basically three segments. There's continuances, there's a consent agenda, and then there's the regular items. Continuances are, in the event the staff or the applicant has requested a continuance for any reason, it's been our custom to approve those unless there are extenuating circumstances. Consent, we'll go through the consent agenda on an item-by-item basis. If there's something on consent that you'd like to have heard separately, raise your hand as I read them, and we'll pull it from consent for discussion. And then, uh, once we're through consent, anything remaining on consent will be voted on all at one time. Then we have the regular items, and those are items that are either pulled from consent or have been placed on regular, uh, uh, and we will go through those, uh, items each individually, and, uh, we'll have an opportunity for the applicants to make their presentation. Anybody who has any concerns or objections have an opportunity to speak or ask questions. Applicants will be limited to five minutes for their presentation, and, uh, the questionnaires will be limited to three minutes each, unless you've asked for additional time in advance, which I don't believe anybody has. Is that right, Liam? No extra time?
No.
Okay. So, for all of, all of us who are here today, this is an opportunity, if you have a phone, to put it on silent position so we won't interrupt anybody that, that may be speaking. And, uh, before we start the regular meeting, if there's anybody here to speak on an item that's not on today's agenda, this is your opportunity to get up and bring it to our attention. Is there anybody in that category? Is there anybody, uh, on WebEx for that?
We don't have anybody on WebEx, Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I don't see anybody in the audience. So, anybody who plans to give testimony today, if you'll stand, raise your right hand and be sworn.
Do you swear or firm the testimony you're about to give? Is this true, so we can hear?
I did.
All right, thank you. Okay. Liam, you ready?
We're ready.
I'll be, uh, Terry.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Victoria Spito's Planning and Development Department. I'll go ahead and read, uh, the continuance items. Uh, PC two is a land excavation operating permit and conditional use amendment request in the name of Massey Partners Limited. It's an operating permit and conditional use for a land excavation in an ACA agricultural district located at the end of Bayhead Road, approximately one mile west of Bellamy Brothers Boulevard, containing approximately 642.16 acres. And this is coming to you with a recommendation to continue to a date uncertain.
Okay, we have a recommendation to continue to a date uncertain. Uh, is there anybody here that has a question about this in the audience? If not, I'd like to hear a motion.
Motion to continue, second.
We have a motion and a second to continue to a date uncertain. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, motion carries.
Item PC three is a conditional use request in the name of Home Elite LLC and Priya Properties LLC slash Urban 54 Estates. It's a conditional use for multifamily dwellings in a C2 general commercial district in south-central Pasco County on the north side of State Road 54, approximately 1,325 feet west of Lake Point Parkway, containing about 13.4 acres. Uh, this is coming to you with a recommendation to continue to the 9/22/2022 Planning Commission in Newport Richie at 1:30 PM.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Do I hear a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue, uh, PC three to September 22 in Newport Richie.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself from this one.
All right.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second and one recusal. Um, did you get the recusal, Madam Clark? Okay. All right, so all in favor of the motion to continue, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries.
And then, item A, PC eight, uh, from the addendum, is a zoning amendment in the name of Hale Collier MPUD Master Plan Unit Development by Julia Herndon, Walter and Elizabeth Franzel, and the Franzel, Franzel Family Revocable Trust. It's a rezoning request from AR Agricultural Residential and R1 Rural Density Residential Zoning Districts to an MPUD to allow for a maximum of 109 single-family detached dwelling units and associated infrastructure on approximately 46.1 acres. There's a revised agenda memo that reflects the, uh, continuance date, uh, which is the recommended continuance date to September 22, 2022, in Newport Richie at 1:30 PM.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, since this one was, is being continued to a date that's different than what was in the original agenda, I think you didn't take public comment, if anybody's here to speak.
Okay.
On the issue of where it's being continued to and when.
All right.
Not on the substance of the application, but somebody has a concern about the continuance date. I think you need to take public comment on that.
Okay. So is there anybody here for public comment on, uh, APC eight? As in terms of the, uh, location of the continuance? That'll be in Newport Richie, right?
Correct.
Terry, okay. All right, is the applicant present?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, Dyer, do I hear a motion?
Motion to continue to September 22.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay, motion carries.
And then, item APC nine, also from the addendum, is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL 2206, Saddle Brook Resort. It's a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment creating subarea policy Flu 7-166, creating future land use map 2-9 sheet 66, amending future land use map, maps 2-15 and sheet 22 from RES six, residential six dwelling units per gross acre, to PD plan development on approximately 549.39 acres of real property located south of State Road 54 and, and east of the service road. This is a continuance requested for the September 22, 2022 Planning Commission in Newport Richie at 1:30 PM.
Okay. Was this advertised to that date? Or no, like the last one?
Uh, this was advertised to a different date.
Okay.
I believe it was advertised to this date.
All right.
Actually, so the memo I have online says it's 9/22, is it? Isn't that what you said it was moved to?
Yes, the memo says 9/22.
Okay, then it is the same to you as what's.
Okay, that's what I'm gonna ask. Okay. All right, so, um, do we have a motion to continue?
Move to continue APC nine to 9/22/2022.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Okay.
Okay, and then, um, that would be the complete list of continuances.
Yes.
You want me to introduce the consent?
Pardon me?
Shall I introduce the consent agenda?
Yes, the consent, that's.
Okay.
Or venison or continuance, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, item PC four is a zoning amendment in the name of Anmar Builders Inc. slash Crella Estates. Uh, it is a change in zoning from an AR Agricultural Residential District to a MF1 multiple-family medium-density district in northwest Pasco County on the north side of Shady Hills Road, east of Soft Wind Lane, containing approximately 19.2 acres. This comes with a recommendation to approve.
Mr. Chair, I need you to pull that out of conflict.
You have a conflict, or you want me to pull it?
Well, you, you do need to pull it so that you can vote on it separately, because you've got to recuse yourself.
Okay, all right. Um, all right, is that the only one consent?
And then, uh, for your information, Mr. Chairman, based on what we know, um, there are no speakers signed up for P5 and P7. If, if the Planning Commission desires, they might put those on consent. Otherwise, we're prepared to give a presentation as part of the regular agenda.
Yeah, let's go ahead and put those on consent then.
I'd like to hear P7.
Oh, you would like to?
Yes.
Okay. So we're gonna pull P4 and P7, is that right?
Well, P7's on regular anyway.
Yeah. Okay.
So I think if you wanna move P5 to consent, you should do a motion to move it to consent.
So moved.
Okay.
Shall I read P5?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion moving P5 to consent?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Shall I read P5 for the record?
Well, he's also gonna pass, if anybody's here for P5.
Yeah, yeah, just saying, Terry.
Okay. Uh, P5 is a zoning amendment, MJW Group Inc. slash Viceroy Apartments. It's a change in zoning from an MF2 multiple-family high-density district to an MF3 multiple-family high-density district in southwest Pasco County, west side of Wood Trail Boulevard, approximately 175 feet north of Old County Road 54, containing approximately 2.8 acres, and this comes with a recommendation to approve.
Okay, is there any, is the applicant present? Anybody here to object? Did I hear somebody?
Yeah, Barbara is the applicant, she, I think.
Oh, okay. I don't see anyone here to object, is anybody online on this one?
There's no one online, Chair.
Okay, Barbara, there's nobody here to object? Do you have any comment?
Lot.
I'm not sure I understood what she said.
She said she does not have any comment.
I thought she said a lot.
She has a lot of comments on the consent agenda, we got problems.
All right, you got three minutes. Okay, um, okay, so let's have a motion on that, please.
Motion approved, a consent agenda, item PC five.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion?
So I have a question, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm a little confused, so what's on the consent now?
Five.
Just, just five.
Yeah.
Well, technically four is on the consent agenda, but you have to go on it separately.
Correct.
So all were. Okay. So you, the motion is correct for PC five.
Yes. All right, so any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, so we have to go back to PC four, I guess.
Yes.
Do we have a motion on PC four?
I just wanna make sure, we did ask if anybody was here.
Yeah, I, I did.
Okay.
Loom Devine Planning and Development, would you like a staff presentation on this one, or?
On PC four?
On PC four.
Um, it's on consent, is there anybody, is the applicant present? Anybody here to object?
I'm here.
Anyone here to object? I, I see no objections, so would the board like to hear it?
I have a question and a comment.
Okay, let's hear it then.
So, so just, um, I know I've read through it, but also just, just explain your comfort level with this density going in this particular area.
Yeah, so they're actually having a deed restriction for 164, um, townhomes. I know they have a conceptual already, and I'm sure Barbara Willhite can speak to that. Um, the density, um, will be less, um, than some of our typical development, but I believe they're coming in around 153, 154, and I'm sure Barbara can correct me if I'm wrong here. So, well, staff is okay with the density, it's in compliance with the comp plan for density, um, and they're also doing a deed restriction.
Okay. And then my comment was that we have asked, um, um, this, this developer to make sure they work with us on providing, which they have said they would, uh, providing, uh, pedestrian access to the, because we have the elementary school site to the east, and then we also have the, uh, middle school site to the north. So ensuring that there's pedestrian access to those schools.
All right.
Yes, well, I would just say that we're already in contact, or the team and I are in contact, so we'll look forward regarding those connections and how to best get our students to your schools. So we've already started that coordination, and that will continue through the site plan.
So, Mr. Williams, would you like staff to add a finding of fact that memorializes that?
That would be great.
Staff can do that.
Okay, do you need to restate it, or are we good?
Was that, I can restate it, so, um, we've asked the developer to work with us on providing pedestrian access both to the elementary school to the east and also to the, uh, middle school to the north.
All right. All right, so the applicant is present, did we have anybody else here to object or have questions?
I'm sorry, I do have probably another comment or question. So I know there's some things, because we've been contacted from the developer to the south, just to make sure they work with us on alignment with our elementary school entrance to Mary Giella, and just thoughts as to traffic in that area, and I'm sure, you know, with traffic studies that would show what is needed, if any improvements are, but just any comments on, on that?
So I, I will let the applicant speak to, you know, cross-access and how that will work. I, I know the applicant has said to me, and as you just stated, that they, um, plan on providing, um, pedestrian cross-access to the schools, um, through sidewalks, so I, i-if there's something traffic-related that you have concerns with, I'll defer to the applicant.
Well, just, uh, to the south, I believe that's more of an industrial light.
Correct.
So they're talking about where to place their entrance into that development and coordinating with where our elementary school entrances are.
Mm-hmm.
But then, just, I assume industrial light wouldn't be particularly heavy as far as traffic, but just any, from, from, I guess what I'm asking is, I assume that this is being looked at from not only existing traffic, but also this Crella Estates impact, as well as the industrial impact to the south, just making sure of what improvements, if that's, if any, might be necessary to Shady Hills Road here.
This is Barbara Willhite, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Our access is through Crella Drive, um, ingress and egress, which Crella Drive and Shady Hills is a signalized intersection. We'll have emergency access to Shady Hills Road. We wouldn't have any driveway conflicts on Shady Hills Road relative to the other development in the area.
I guess more my question is, do you see any, any major improvements to this area?
Area.
Necessary, and there may not be, I'm just asking the question.
Um, I don't know if we have our.
Yes, Steve Henry, who did the analysis, is here.
Good afternoon, Steve Henry, Lincoln Associates, 5023, West Laurel, Tampa, 33607. I have not been sworn to.
Honest man.
Do you swear or firm the testimony you're about to give, so we can hear?
I do. So, one, we're actually doing the traffic study, have done the traffic study for the development to the south, and, uh, so we're working with staff on the access for that and configuration and geometry for those. And then in addition to this, as this one comes in, we'll be doing an access management analysis for this project. And so we'll be able to look at both and make sure that there's no improvements necessary, or what, what's improvement we have to do.
Yeah, that was my question.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure all that was being looked at together.
Yes.
I would also, I would like to add as well, we have our access management team online, and they're listening to this now. So when that comes in for review, they'll be aware.
Great, thank you.
All right. I think that's everyone, so, uh, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve with Chris's added, uh, finding of fact.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
I want the record to reflect that Mr. Moody recused himself.
Did you get that? Okay. You're doing PC six, right?
Yes, PC six, Loom Devine Planning and Development, PDD 22 dash CU 20, in the name of RR Sharp Properties LLC, 813 Towing. Um, it is a conditional use request, request, um, for towing services and storage of vehicles in a C2 general commercial district. The subject site is currently located on the east side of Land O' Lakes Boulevard, approximately 700 feet south of Cove Lake Place. This is a look at the arid view. The surrounding future land use is ROR to the northeast and south, and to the west is ROR and IL. The surrounding zoning to the north is C2, to the east is R2, to the south is C2, and to the west is R2 and C2. The subject site is currently vacant on approximately 0.62 of an acre. The applicant is requesting a conditional use for towing services and storage of vehicles in C2 general commercial district. The subject site has a future land use classification of ROR. The surrounding area is characterized by commercial and residential development consisting of single-family homes. Access to the property is from Land O' Lakes Boulevard and FDOT maintained architrailer roadway with approximately 100, 120 feet of right-of-way, which varies. This is a look at the conceptual plan. And this is coming with a recommendation for approval with conditions from Planning and Development's staff.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Uh, is anyone here to object?
I'm not objecting, but I just have a couple, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I believe we have a couple people who are registered to speak in the audience today in opposition to this item.
Did we have somebody raise their hand to object?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have anybody on WebEx?
We had two individuals register for WebEx, but they're not currently online.
Okay. And have you heard from the applicant?
I will check with the applicant.
Yeah, I'm aware that they called and went to the wrong location. And so, I'd like to give them the opportunity if we can, so maybe, uh, if I might suggest, maybe we should just go ahead and move to, uh.
PC seven? Or P7?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll come, we'll come back to that one.
P7, PDD 22 dash CU 26, in the name of Holiday Square Limited, Johnson, US 19, and Floral. It is a conditional use request for multifamily dwelling units in C2 general commercial district. The subject site is currently located on the east side of US Highway 19, approximately 120 feet south. The subject site is currently located on the east side of US Highway 19, approximately 120 feet south of Floral Avenue. And here is a look at the aerial view. The surrounding future land use to the north is RES nine and COM commercial, to the east is RES six, to the south is RES nine and ROR, and to the west is ROR. To the north is for the surrounding futures, sorry, for the surrounding zoning to the north is R4 and C2, to the east is R4 and MF1, to the south is R4 and C2, and to the west is C2. The subject site is currently vacant on approximately 13.65 acres. The applicant is requesting a conditional use for multifamily dwelling units in C2. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with 330 multifamily apartments in conformance with the MF3 multifamily density district standards. The surrounding area is characterized by commercial and residential development consisting of single-family homes. The subject site has a future land use classification of ROR. And here is a look at the conceptual plan proposed. This is coming with a recommendation with conditions from Planning and Development Department. I'm here if you have any questions.
Okay, could you, can we put that site plan back up?
Of course.
Everybody gets a good look at it?
So, Mr. Chair, before you, well, unless you have questions for staff, we shall let the applicant present.
Yeah. So, is the applicant present?
It's me, Barbara.
Where are you? Oh, hey, Barbara. Yeah, go ahead.
My team is in the audience as well. They're there in person.
Okay.
Project engineer, and Steve Henry is the traffic engineer. If you have any specific questions regarding the site plan or what they're proposing, they can certainly answer those questions. This is an old defunct retail site. It failed many years ago, and it stayed vacant except for a motorcycle school for a very long time. It's allowed to perform conditional use. When the board recently changed the code to not have such uses for multifamily and C2, everywhere in the county, they specifically left that as an available additional use, this area, to encourage development and redevelopment in this area. So that's exactly what we're doing here. The project will generate less traffic than the C2 zoning on the property. And it's going to be a great addition to an area that needs redevelopment, that needs this type of investment. This is the market rate. It will bring in a higher income to this area, and hopefully it'll spur redevelopment of some of the retail. There's a lot of retail, a lot of aging and dying retail in this area. And so we're hopeful that this investment, and we're thankful for this client, to bring this kind of investment to this location. Hopefully we'll see more projects as a result of it. As I said, my team is available if you have any specific questions on our technical side.
All right, thank you, Barbara. Is, do we have any questions from up here, or you want to hear from the, is anyone here to object? See no objections. Do we have any questions for Barbara?
I don't for Barbara. I have questions about traffic for staff and for the applicant.
Okay. The applicant, is applicant here?
Well, I think Ms. Willhite said that Mr. Henry, Steve can answer most of those.
Yes, Steve Henry, Links and Associates.
And first, I got to give credit where credit is due. When I saw this site plan, I said, wow, what a beautiful site plan, so very nice job. There's one driveway to the project, and it's all channelized medians.
Correct.
Right in, right out.
Correct.
And anybody that's driven this stretch knows what a nightmare that it is. I had to think long and hard about it, and I said, well, I'm not sure that I buy the argument about the less traffic than commercial, because at the end of the day, the site's not actually generating any traffic today, but nonetheless, something will go there someday, and probably this will go here today. The question that I have is, is there any chance of getting some kind of left-turn movement for this project? Because I just see this as a U-turn nightmare in a place that is already a traffic jam. That being said, if it were redeveloped as a shopping center, we'd have the same problem.
Correct. And that's the issue. And we have met with DOT and discussed it at length with DOT, but the issue is obviously to get a directional median opening, we have to close somebody else's median opening to be able to accomplish that. So based on that, we, the end discussion was it would be a right-in, right-out, and there would be U-turns. Now, from DOT's standpoint, that's why you see directional median openings there. They believe those are safer, and the U-turns are safer. But we certainly looked at that at length with them. But from a, from a traffic standpoint, this is certainly less traffic than what it currently is zoned for and what it could be developed for. So from DOT's standpoint, they were happy with the redevelopment and it being right-in, right-out.
The other question is, in our, I don't know whether you got to see the packet that we get, but included was an accident map. So I'm questioning what was the purpose of including the accident map in the.
I think that was a pedestrian accident map.
All right, well, is there concern for pedestrians?
So yes, so our NPO team did review this and had concerns with sidewalk safety and connection for pedestrians. So they wanted to include that map. They did make comments that were included in your finding of facts. And I did also include a finding of fact that talked about that there is continuous sidewalks all the way to nearby schools. Because this would be under two miles from, from the local schools.
And I just, I did want to clarify that, because when I, and I measured it a couple of ways, and I, it is within two miles of Sunray Elementary, but it looked to me to be beyond two miles of Paul R. Smith and Anclot High.
Yes.
At least by my, at least by my measuring on the property appraiser's site.
So, I'm not sure how you measured it, if it was a direct line from the property lines?
No.
So, no.
I measured through kind of just a street.
Street, right. So, so staff measured from property line to property line, so it was under two. I can tell you that staff also reviewed it as just the nearest elementary, middle, and high schools.
Gotcha.
So, so we wanted to look at all, all three, because there could potentially be students going to all three of those schools.
So, and just to, since we're on this topic, so this would be zoned for Sunray Elementary, which is on the north, to the north, and that is within two miles. Now, I'm not aware that students in this area walk. I would assume that we're transporting these kids, but I didn't know that for sure. But then the fact that they'd be crossing 19, definitely, at least as far as I know, a bus would be transporting these students from this site to Paul R. Smith Middle and Anclot.
And, and that's why that pedestrian cross-accident map was included.
Yes. And, no, I, so that was good information, but I just want to clarify for this group that that's where we are with that, I think.
Okay. All right. John, anything else?
I have nothing else. I actually like the project. I just hope you guys can push DOT harder. I heard the comment that I closed somebody else's median opening off. Well, it's a public right-of-way. We, the public, own the medians and the openings, so I think we got to prioritize where those are, but I understand you can't control what the state does, so.
Okay, thanks.
And I would, I would add, Mr. Chair, that as far as capacity for the schools, we have capacity, and those three schools I cited for this project.
All right, great. Okay.
Yeah, I guess just to add a couple of things. Obviously, one, and I think this was touched on, this definitely is an area in need of redevelopment. I know myself, as I've come in on other projects on 19, I keep hearing about, and I've heard about, on the planning side, this Harbors redevelopment plan, and I believe, is this in the Harbors redevelopment plan?
Yeah.
I would, I would assume.
Yes, it is.
I would assume that, on the planning side, that everything's been looked at, because I, I guess, while we're getting a bite at the apple, while we're having redevelopment going 19, are all the goals of the Harbors development, redevelopment plan being met with what they're proposing here?
For this particular development, we're hitting a number of goals and objectives in the Harbors redevelopment plan. There isn't anything specific to the site, although it has identified a few of these sites, and I think this was one of them, for redevelopment purposes. So, so this is a form of redevelopment that is acceptable to the Harbors plan.
Okay. I mean, it's, I mean, this isn't exactly right at the county line, but I mean, this is one of those kind of gateway projects to the county line, and making sure that the product we end up with here is something that's what the county's looking for and meets the goals and objectives of what the county planning departments worked so hard on for redevelopment of the 19 corridor. So, I only saw it referenced briefly in the memo. I just wanted to, just for the record, or hopefully, and maybe that's something that comes up when they come in with their site plan, but something that's looked at as far as for redevelopment and making, you know, a nice-looking project for everybody. I mean, I'm sure the developer wants something nice, too, but I just wanted to mention.
Let me tell you.
Yeah, that's a good point.
The developer's website looks like he does a nice product.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I always caution myself with, once the conditional use is granted, there's no guarantee that this is going to be the developer, so that's, unless the conditional use only runs with this developer, which I don't think is the case, is it?
No, that is not the case.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, I think we've asked everybody if they want to speak. So if that'll hear a motion.
Move to approve item P seven.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like, sign for no. Okay, motion carries.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, we do have the applicant from P six. He is now here. I don't know if you want to wait for that item still, or if you want to go back to it, since it's still fresh on our minds.
Let's, let's go on to the last one, I think. Then we'll come back.
No problem.
Good afternoon. Shelby Pointe, Long Range Planning. This item is going to be a PC, let's see, PC 10. So this is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment for high ridge lots two and three. A small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map two dash 15 and sheet 10 from IL industrial light to COM commercial on approximately 3.47 acres of real property located to the east of Galen-Wilson Boulevard and south of Ridge Road. And this is PDD 22 0464. Would you all like a presentation on this item?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
All right. Oh, thank you. All righty, so this is CPAS 22 15, High Ridge Center, lots two and three. This property is located within the west market area, and is also in the urban service. So the proposal is a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map two dash 15, sheet 10, from IL industrial light to COM commercial. This is generally located east of Galen-Wilson Boulevard and south of Ridge Road. The resolution to this is to conduct a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map two dash 15, sheet 10, from IL industrial light to COM commercial. And a rezoning petition has also been submitted to change the zoning from I1 light industrial park district to C2 general commercial district. So staff are coming today with a recommendation of denial, and the following policies, then this is why staff have found this proposal to be inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. I have noted them here, but I will also go through them one by one, just to kind of outline what the comprehensive plan says, what the intent of that section is, also taking into consideration direction we've been given from the board and staff. So, the following policies that we have found it to be inconsistent with would be policy flu 1.6.1, commercial development. Policy flu 1.6.2, the location of commercial development. Policy flu 1.6.4, neighborhood, neighborhood commercial uses. Policy ED 1.4.4, limitations on the conversion of important employment locations. Policy flu 1.8.7, economic development, and policy flu 1.8.10, preservation of capacity for employment generating uses. So I'll start from the first ones. That would be policy flu 1.6.1. This item does not meet the intent for that flu. With it, you're setting the guidelines of where commercial development may occur. So it does state in policy flu 1.6.1, that commercial development may only occur within the COM flu, the ROR, mixed use, town center, employment centers, and PD. The subject site is not located within a TND. The subject site does not qualify as a conflicting zoning, and the subject site does not qualify as a commercial infill. Policy flu 1.6.2 contemplates when you are able to do a comprehensive plan amendment to the commercial flu. So this item does, this flu requirements of policy flu 1.6.2, it identifies the areas that are going to be suitable for that commercial flu classification to permit commercial development. The subject site is located at the intersection of, the subject site is not located at the intersection of an arterial and collector roadway, thus not meeting the minimum locational criteria. That is the first need for us to assess, and it does not meet that criteria. The next policy is also to consider amendments to the comprehensive plan to the COM flu. This item is for 1.6.4. The policy identifies areas that are suitable for the COM flu classification to permit neighborhood commercial development. The subject site does meet the minimum locational criteria for an amendment to the COM flu, so that's going to be along an arterial or collector, although an amendment would not be supported, as the COM flu generates less employment than the IL future land use would. An amendment to COM commercial is inconsistency with the policy elsewhere of the comprehensive plan. So although it would find consistency here, it does have inconsistencies elsewhere within the comprehensive plan. The next policy to review is policy ED 1.4.4, and that is the limitation on the conversion of important employment generating, or locations. Pasco County shall recognize the high priority of retaining employment generating land uses and as, in appropriate and compatible locations within the county, and shall recognize this priority during the review of plan amendments, rezoning requests, site plan reviews, and permitting process that involve the conversion of the EC employment center future land use, or IH industrial heavy, and the IL industrial light future land use classifications to a different use. The subject site is appropriate and compatible location for the IL industrial future land use classification. There are no wetlands located, geographical constraints, and there, or insufficient infrastructure. The proposed amendment requests removing the IL industrial, industrial light future land use. The conversion of the IL to commercial generates 41% less employment opportunity than the IL flu would in this area. The next policy that we found it to be inconsistent with would be policy flu 1.8.7 for economic development. So that policy comes with the intent to encourage development, which will contribute more to the county in revenue than it will consume in services, provided that such development can be accomplished within the spirit of this comprehensive plan. Location within the west and south market areas are encouraged. So this site is located within the west market area. The subject site is located within that market area, and the IL flu contributes more to the county in revenue than the COM flu would in this case, as this is, has been classified as an employment generating land use.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a thought for on this one?
Absolutely.
So, Shelby, I'm trying to understand, and I understand the arguments on the other policies, but I'm not sure I understand this one. So, the statement that you said IL flu contributes more to the county revenue than the COM flu, what is that based on?
So David Engel from the Office of Economic Growth, and he has performed a fiscal impact analysis on this, and that is one of the attachments in the packet that he has.
I did look at his analysis. It's not a fiscal impact analysis. It says it's an economic impact analysis.
Okay.
So there is a difference.
Okay.
A fiscal impact analysis is generally a tax analysis or a tax generation analysis. I looked at Mr. Engel's analysis, and it's an employment generation analysis, not a revenue generation analysis. So, I guess I have some concerns about you putting up a PowerPoint that says that the IL flu is going to contribute more to the county revenue than the COM. than the comm flu when there's no support. I mean, I looked at his report, it doesn't talk about revenue at all.
Okay.
It talks about employment. So, I mean, if your statement was that the IL flu generates more employment than the comm flu, that is supportive of Mr. Engel's analysis, but I don't think you could be representing that it generates more in revenue unless you have an analysis, a true fiscal impact analysis to support that.
Absolutely, I can request that from him.
So, it's two concerns. One is your PowerPoint, and two, the fact that you're calling it, Mr. Engel's analysis, a fiscal impact analysis, when it really isn't. It's a jobs analysis.
Okay.
And for both of those reasons, I don't think you should be relying on 1.8.7 for this denial, because I don't, if you read 1.8.7 literally, it says Pasco County shall encourage development which will contribute more to the county revenue than will consume in services. That could be true for commercial or industrial. I mean, my general understanding, and Mr. Pito's can tell me if I'm wrong, is that many non-residential uses contribute more to the county in revenue than they consume in services. It's really the residential uses that tend to consume more in services than they generate in revenue. So, I'm not sure, I mean, I guess maybe Mr. Pito's has a comment on this, but I don't see how 1.8.7 applies to this situation. And if you or Mr. Pito's have a contrary argument, I'm welcome to, I'll listen, but I'm not, I'm not seeing any evidence that supports it from Mr. Engel's email.
Okay.
I'm reading his email, and it clearly talks about comparing employment generation from IL to employment generation of C-2. Nothing in there about revenue.
I could definitely request that information for you.
I'd like to piggyback on that, too. You know, I think it's, you know, we've got blinders on in this particular instance, because this particular applicant, unfamiliar with the property, he's created, which was not there before, roughly 20 acres of this IL property that the county thinks is so invaluable. And then, he's asking for 2 acres of it to be commercial, which is on Ridge Road. To me, that's a logical use of the property. The IL property that we're, that we hold so dearly, wouldn't even be there if it hadn't been for this applicant. So, I think we need to take that into account, too.
And that being, being Mr. Chair, remember, that's a different point that I'm trying to make here.
Right.
So, my point is that I don't think you can base a denial on this particular policy unless you or Terry have some information that I'm not aware of. Do you, Terry?
Terry, do you have any comments on that one?
I think that the issue was, I understand what you're saying, David, in terms of the fiscal impact analysis versus the economic impact analysis. The conclusion...
I mean, I actually think, to be clear, I think that Mr. Engel's analysis supports potential inconsistencies with 1.4.4 and 1.8.10, more than it supports anything related to 1.8.7.
Understood. And I think the impact analysis in the agenda memo actually stands on it in its own section, and the feasibility analysis of the site, although there it is titled fiscal impact analysis, and it should be titled economic impact analysis. And I think the conclusion for 1.8.7 was that because the contribution to the gross county product as an IL use over comm is five to one, and the scales are that sort of in favor of IL, that it would generate, it could have the potential to generate more revenue. However, it is understood what David is saying in terms of, we're not looking at, you know, the highest revenue producer. We're just looking at what produces a net revenue under Policy Flu 1.8.7. So, I would agree with David that it supports more Policy ED 1.4.4 and Policy Flu 1.8.10. And then again, I'll just underline that the analysis itself stands on its own on page 5, under preliminary feasibility analysis number 1. And I think it was just being used in this case as backup for, or support information for 1.8.7.
Okay. You can continue with your rest of your presentation, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, the next policy is Policy Flu 1.8.10, preservation of capacity for employment generating uses, and that is, the county shall, through the development review process, ensure that adequate land and transportation capacity is available for present and future high-paying employment generating land uses, such as office, industrial, employment center uses. So, through that, then adequate land and capacity is available for the subject site for an employment generating use. Commercial development has not been identified as an employment generating use for the future land use classification. So, in general, then the site is located, what, okay, I'm not going to get that part to work, my apologies. So, these are the 2 lots that front Ridge Road and Galen-Wilson Boulevard to the west there. The current future land use there is IL, that there is an entire area of that industrial light area, so this does act as, I believe roughly it's around 45 to 50 acres of that IL flu that work in tandem. The proposed future land use here is commercial. There is commercial located across the street, and there is ROR in the general area. The current zoning right now is IL. In 2018, a rezoning petition occurred to amend the entire area in purple there to I-1 for those light industrial uses, thus creating a light industrial park. And staff do come to the local planning agency to find the amendment inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, and do recommend denial to the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, can I ask another question?
Of course, David.
So, Shelby, what percentage of the total IL land use are these 2 parcels?
I would have to do some calculations to get you those numbers.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out why, because I think IL and I won't allow up to 15% retail anyway. So, I guess I'm trying to figure out, if they submitted for retail use on this site, why wouldn't staff just, as long as it was under 15%, why wouldn't staff just?
Absolutely.
I guess, why are we even here?
So, the IL flu, you're correct, the IL flu supports up to 15% of support commercial. So, that doesn't allow for all types of retail. Ideally, we want to do see types of commercial that will be able to support that industry there. So, that's going to be different from just coming in like with your quick service restaurant versus an actual sit-down restaurant. So, the examples that are given in that future land use are for daycares, restaurants, dry cleaning centers, hotels, motels, and service stations.
So, do we know what the applicant's proposing to do, and did staff determine that it wasn't support commercial, what they're proposing to do there? Or we don't know what they're proposing?
I believe in initial conversations, it was car washes, but I can defer to the applicant on that if that has changed.
Well, I mean...
No use proposed, okay. So, potentially, the use could fit within the IL flu, yes.
So, the site, these 2 sites are allowed to be retail, I mean, unless they're under 15%. Is that accurate? Well, I mean, I guess I'd like to know if they're under 15%.
Yeah, the IL future land use allows up to 15% support commercial. That would be applicable to the IL, the whole 15% would be applicable to the IL district in which it's located.
But if these were the first 2 in, and they were under 15%, they could be retail today?
Retail that is consistent with IL, right.
Okay. So, is that the reason why there's a distinction between staff and the applicant is staff would only want support commercial, whereas the applicant wants something that may not be support commercial? Is that the reason that we're here?
Well, I think the applicant can answer that question, because the applicant applied for a change in future land use to comm.
But the applicant was aware that they could get 15% support retail?
Correct, yes.
Does the applicant own this entire assemblage? Because I'm looking on Mappa, and it looks like there's a bunch of...
They may speak to that, but I think at one point they did.
Well, but I will tell you, I believe, and Terry can correct me if I'm wrong, that the way they do the 15% retail, it's first come, first served. So, if they came in and put retail uses there, I think it occupied the entire 15%, it would effectively preclude everybody else, whether they owned it or not. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Is that accurate, Terry?
Yep.
Can I ask a quick question, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
You mentioned that the site in 2018 was rezoned to IL. Was there a companion comprehensive plan amendment that was already comm planned IL at that time, or?
No, sir, the future land use in that area was already IL. Let me go back. So, this entire gray area, this entire area is the IL flu, so all of that is original. The amendment that was made was for the zoning in 2018, and I believe that's when Mr. Blackwell came in the first time, and he had that amendment to I-1 to permit those types of uses.
Okay.
These uses that you have colored in as originally as IL, you got a Wawa's on one of them, there's a shopping center on the one across the street, they're all commercial. So, why have you got it colored differently?
So, this right here is the future land use map, so if you see the gray color, that is the IL future land use.
Yeah, but they're not IL. They're not IL, they're developed. It's commercial.
Yes, sir. So, the orange section is the ROR. The Wawa that you're referring to is in that ROR section, which does permit that commercial development.
I'm talking about the gray area that you have right next to the orange. That's not IL.
Right at the boundary? Is that the location?
At the Home Depot.
Oops.
You got Home Depot right there, and then you got Wawa next to that, and they're across the street, you got a shopping center, and you got a fireplace store over there, paint store.
Is a music store support commercial for IL? Because I buy my guitar strings across the street.
I haven't, we haven't analyzed the buildings across the street, but the Home Depot and the shopping centers to the east of this site is ROR. So, portions of Home Depot are in the IL, and you could classify that 15% as being used by portions of Home Depot, but Home Depot also has an industrial character to it, to some degree, in terms of the types of materials it handles. So, that future land use line does crisscross the Home Depot building, but the majority of the Home Depot entitlement likely comes from the ROR designation that is at the intersection of Little and Ridge.
So, how would that work, Terry, when you're calculating that 15%? Are you counting any of the Home Depot or not?
We would have to go back to those approvals to see how the retail percentages were calculated, and also probably do the same thing with the guitar, I forget the name of the business now, with those types of uses on the north side. But it brings up, and it bears the point, that first come, first served. If you, if they take up the 15%, that there is no 15% available for the IL.
Can you answer a question I asked? Was it support commercial?
I, it depends, and it all depends on what's, how it was classified, because there are some uses in C-3 that participate in support commercial activity for IL, or I-1 and IL combinations. So, I can't answer that question off the top of my head if it's...
It just seems very subjective to me, like, you know, you just pull out of the air, let it come to you.
But the thing that I would like to underline is that...
I'm not buying it.
If the 15% is taken up by Home Depot, a conversion to comm further waters down the industrial area that's already designated.
Well, Terry, I think we kind of need to know the answer about how you would count Home Depot, because my original question was, can they build commercial under the 15% allowance? And I'm not hearing definitively that they could, because Home Depot may be occupying part of it. So, it seems like that's kind of an important thing to know, how we would count Home Depot. It's, because I guess part of the Home Depot is NIL and part of it's not. Is that, I'm not good with this math.
Yeah, I'm showing now.
So, it's part NIL and part ROR.
Right.
So...
So, that IL flu is, according to the memo, it's 34.2, so we're about, what, 5 acres of support commercial? Is that correct?
Well, is that taken on a parcel-by-parcel basis, or on a district basis?
I think it should be the district basis, because if you tried to do it on a parcel-by-parcel basis, depending on the size of the parcel, the percentages would...
Would you include the IL across the street in that district?
I believe it's all the same polygon on the map, so that would be the district.
That's way below 15%.
Well, my guess, my prediction is if you include the land to the north, Ridge, those 2 parcels probably are below 15%. I don't know if they are or not, if you include Home Depot, though.
So, I've asked staff to run an analysis in which they'll check how many acres the Home Depot is occupying as compared to the overall future land use of the IL flu district, and then that should give us a good idea for what percentage has been used up.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out if there's some compromise here that allows them to put retail on these 2 sites without sacrificing the policies that staff has identified in the agenda memo. It seems like there would be if whatever they want to put there could be classified as support commercial and it's under 15%. I guess we should probably, I mean, you should hear from the applicant what they intend to put there, because if, if what they intend to put there could be classified as support commercial, we may not even have an issue.
Right. With continuing with the existing IL.
Continuing with the existing IL, because I mean, they can still put what they want there.
Right, and I don't think the planning and development department would have an issue with continuing with the existing IL.
All right, would the applicant like to speak, please?
I'm sorry, is this, do we still have questions to staff?
Yeah, yeah, well, we'll see what the applicant says, and then we'll have questions.
Steve Booth, 75, no, we just moved, 3030, Starkey Boulevard in Trinity. I have been sworn, I'm an attorney representing the applicant, and I'll grit my teeth a little bit and say that I can't really address all of these issues with the, with the staff comments, having just received them 10 minutes before this meeting. But with that being said, I think that we have to look at the forest rather than the trees on this, and Mr. Gray hit on it, that we do have an application for commercial zoning along with this, if this is approved. And everything around there is commercial. Now, I don't know if this particular exhibit, now, can you go ahead and pass those out, shows that the Home Depot...
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Motion second, on favor.
Aye.
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 This is the zoning map, and I understand that we're not considering that at this time, but you can't understand the logic and the appropriateness of our request until you see all that commercial around there. It's, we have a, we're required to put a connection to the Home Depot that's right next to us for these, for this entire IL, and it, that connection is right along Lot 3 there, which is one of the lots that's subject to this. And it, that connection is right along Lot Three there, which is one of the lots that's subject to this. The discussion about percentages, the fifteen percent, what David has pointed out is correct, that this entire AL could have fifteen percent support commercial. The rest of the lots in there would be two hundred by one hundred typically, and they would not typically support any commercial use, and I would doubt that the commercial use would want to be back in the middle of the industrial. But the front edge, right on Ridge Road, is really only appropriate for commercial. Now, David's question was, well, there are certain commercial uses that are considered support that we could put there. We don't have any contracts with any of those. And the problem is this, it's twofold. Number one, these are not the type of commercial uses that they identify in the code that we can put in there that anybody has come to us and said, hey, we'd like to buy the lots and put it in. You're allowed to put in a bank, you're allowed to put in a daycare center, you're allowed to put in a motel, a hotel, a dry cleaners, and a restaurant. Restaurant, maybe, okay? But nobody's knocking down the doors to purchase those two lots. And part of the reason, and this is the second point I wanted to make on it, is that ordinance talks about staff looking at these and determining if they're support and all that. You know, we got buyers, when they come in, they want to close in as soon as their due diligence is done. You think we can get approvals for that type of thing with public hearings and all that? And it's just killing the project. And I look at what they identified, not the staff, but the ordinance identifies as potential support uses, and I don't know why some of the regular ones in, the other ones in commercial zoning weren't included in there also. There doesn't, I don't think, seem to be a lot of rhyme and reason as to which ones were included as support and which ones were not. So quite frankly, we were relegated to coming back in so that we could have a better mix of what could potentially go next to a Home Depot and has an access road to it, and across the street from a shopping center, et cetera, that would be that somebody would come and say, hey, you know, we would like to develop the property with that type of a use. And we think that it, it is appropriate, and it's, quite frankly, with due respect to staff, it's laughable when we're talking about economic issues with two small lots, that they say we could put in a dry cleaners and a, a bank as a support. Is that going to really have any effect at all? It's gonna, it seems to me that it just is, is a tempest in a teapot there. And I would respectfully request that you look closely at the map that we've got here showing the actual uses of the property surrounding it, and would say that it's totally, totally appropriate for these two lots. We can't generate anything that would constitute a support use. Can't generate any contracts at this point, haven't been able to, been trying for several years. And the only thing we were relegated to, as I said, was to seek a COM classification, flu classification, so that we could indeed market it to try and get something that's more reasonable and in line with everything else that's out there.
Steve, I guess just to play devil's advocate, I mean, staff does issue zoning letters. I mean, they, I've seen them, if you're unsure about what can be used on a particular piece of property, I've seen them issue a zoning letter saying it can be used for these thirty uses or these forty retail uses. And so I think there is a way to get clarity on what support commercial uses could go there.
With due respect, David, I can't put a lot of faith that as to how that determination is going to be made, I don't know how the determination was made to include those uses that are in there. There's other ones that I would look at in what is allowed in commercial, C2, and say, why wasn't that included? But apparently, a staff member at some point, not the folks that are here presently, because I think it's been there a while, but said, no, that's not an appropriate support use. And so we're going to have to, every time somebody comes in with a contract, contact the staff and see if, if that's a use that they would allow.
I'm not suggesting that, I'm saying you could actually get them to generate a letter for, not wait for somebody to come for a contract, you ask them to generate a letter saying, here's the, here's the twenty-five retail uses that can be placed on this site. And then you can take that and use it to sell the site to whoever. You can rely on a zoning letter.
I think what he's saying is nobody's coming, knock down their door for that. And I agree with Mr. Booth, I have the, both the C3 and the IL zoning district standards here, and I look at the permitted uses, and I understand, I, I, I look at what's there in the neighborhood, and probably retail, which is not listed in any of the permitted uses in C3 or IL. And the reason that I bring C3 up is because IL is inclusive of C3 uses.
Right.
Retail's not included in that list. And if you look at that corner, it's all retail.
And we're fronting on Ridge Road, and none of the rest of the property will be used as commercial, because the lots are not conducive to that at all.
Do you own the rest of the lots, Steve?
We have, we've sold most of the lots, yes.
So how would you address, I mean, if staff raised a concern that allowing this site to go to COM now allows more retail to be used on the rest of the site, because now it gets its own fifteen percent?
Now, it's what, David?
Well, I mean, I could see staff being concerned that if they allow the site to go to COM, now the rest of the industrial site gets its own fifteen percent retail. In other words.
They don't get retail, they get, not retailers in stores.
They get support commercial. They get, they get something that's not industrial.
Well, those are generally permitted uses in those districts to begin with, a permitted use in the IL is a bank.
But David, you'd still have to.
It doesn't go against the fifteen percent, that's an allowed use.
You, you'd still have to commend for a rezoning of the property, and anybody, this board and the Board of County Commissioners then would look at it and say, does this make any sense to use fifteen percent in what's left of the IL in the middle of this industrial project?
I guess let me ask Steve, let's, Terry, that question. For the retail that's in I-1, is that permitted as a, the support retail? Is it permitted as a right or does it require a rezoning?
Oh, I'm sorry, this is IL and C3.
Can you repeat the question, David, I'm sorry?
So the support retail that's allowed in I-1, is it as a right or do you say require, I mean, because I'm seeing, well, I'm seeing some retail uses, like restaurants. I'm trying to figure out what, where's the.
Those are the permitted uses in the district, they don't need a conditional use, a special exception, they can build those by right, under that, under that Euclidean zoning district.
But the fifteen percent, is that in the COM plan?
Yes.
Yes, that's in the COM plan, I think there's also similar language in, in the I-1 zoning district standards. But since we're only talking about comprehensive plan, I would stick to the IL language that, that Mr. Moody was referring to. And so if it's, if it's support retail that filters through the IL flu and is enabled by the I-1 zone, whether as a permitted use, as a conditional use, or as a special exception, they can move through accordingly, because it, the IL would allow those support uses. So if I-1 has something as a permitted use, then it's a permitted use. If I-1 has that, has a use that meets that criteria, but it's as, it is as a conditional use, then they come in and get their conditional use, and so on and so forth. But the use is enabled by virtue of the IL flu's fifteen percent support commercial rule.
Part of the problem I'm having here with this is that staff's argument, and we're supposed to just accept it. And I'm going to go back to your memorandum. It says, we're just supposed to accept that while COM can generate employment potential, it's generally understood to be less than the potential of that of IL, IH, EC, et cetera, et cetera. I got a problem with that, because when I go to the Department of Economic Opportunity website and I download the fifteen top employers in Pasco County, not one of them is an industrial use, whether we include public or private employers in the list. And then we get a memorandum, an email that says, this site will generate more jobs as IL than COM. There's nothing to back it up, it's a nebulous statement in an email. I saw there was a spreadsheet that was supposed to be attached, why weren't we provided with the spreadsheet? I submit drainage calculation reports this thick, and they're gone through with a fine-tooth comb, but I'm just supposed to take a nebulous statement in an email and accept it as fact?
That is the analysis that was provided to us, is commentary on this project from the Office of Economic Growth. We can, we can request.
I have no idea how he came up with that conclusion. And then the other thing is, if it generates so much jobs, there's, this project is zoned IL, it's land used IL. I went in a cella this morning before I came here. There's only one, one active permit application, and it's by the applicant himself. There was another that was withdrawn, and I can tell you as a practicing engineer in the area, I've done a dozen layouts in that center, none of which have come to fruition yet. So right now, the center's not generating any jobs.
Terry, can I ask a question regarding the employment generation and, and the, the statements that are made as far as employment generation for those land uses? Does, does the size of the parcel matter in that statement? And what I'm, where I'm getting at is, if you have a, a twenty-acre industrial site, I can buy off that that's going to generate a lot of jobs, but, I mean, what, what is the large job generator for an acre and a half parcel?
Well, the, the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council report that came out in April identified twenty acres, I believe it's twenty or twenty-five acres or so, as the, a, a good size to target for these IL development areas. So when you establish the IL future land use, it's, they're not all going to be, you know, the corporate business park campuses that, that we see sometimes on the east side of the county. And here on the west side of the county, we do have a number of IL future land uses that are subdivided, that have been planted essentially. But that's another form of, of business park. So I would argue that the twenty, the hundred and fifteen acres that is this whole industrial light future land use designation, a good chunk of which is actually, the school is actually included in it, I think it's Chaska Elementary, which, which is allowed in, in the IL flu as a public, semi-public use. The hundred, the, the entire hundred and fifteen acres would be what you would want to preserve in order to attract the industrial businesses that would move into that IL flu. To parcel them off, well, that's what Pasco County has done in the past, and that's what we've been directed not to continue doing in terms of preserving the IL, IH, and EC areas.
Well, I mean, I asked that question, and I, I was involved with another piece of property in Pasco County that had similar land use and zonings, and I've been involved with that project for probably fifteen years, okay? And it sat there vacant for probably twelve years, until, and, and ran across a lot of these same issues, frankly. I mean, you talk about support commercial or, you know, support uses. You know, that project, the problem we came into, I mean, we went in there, I went in personally probably for six to eight years, every time a user came in trying to get a determination, and it would take weeks to get a determination. And the, I mean, we, we literally had no idea. I mean, I understand there's a list of uses, but every single user that's out there comes in and they don't, half the users we get, or half the users that come in don't fall under the specific categories that are listed in the code. I mean, a swim school, a swim school is not listed there. Is a swim school, I mean, I'm not asking you to make a determination now, but that's, that's just an example. I mean, I, personally, I think that the location of this just makes sense for, for commercial uses, especially of a parcel this size.
If, if I may, the, I think the economic conditions have changed post-pandemic. Pasco is seeing a higher interest in industrial land development, and we recently completed the Ridge Road connection to the Suncoast Parkway, and I would say in a number of years, there'll, there'll be a connection all the way to US 41. So there's going to be, Ridge Road is going to connect to the Strategic Intermodal System for the unit, for Florida. And so when we have established IL, I-1 areas, the default position that we're going to take is to preserve them. And in this area, I recognize that there's quite a bit of retail, but the comprehensive plan currently states that this particular segment of Ridge Road should be an employment generating location that does have, based on the economic impact analysis that the Office of Economic Growth has given us, more job generating potential.
The second largest employer in this county is Publix.
Understood.
Okay, there's no industrial you, employer in this county that employs more. So I, these are very nebulous statements about, you know, these are job generators, they generate a lot, these job, industrial generates more jobs than commercial. Well, the numbers don't bear that out, the statistics don't bear that out.
So Mr. Moody, with all due respect, because Mr. Engle isn't here to defend himself, but I think what he would probably tell you is that, as a general rule, industrial generates higher paying jobs than a Publix. And so if you look at Policy 120.10.
We're allowed to put a fast food restaurant in this zoning district.
Well, if it's a support commercial use.
And.
I wouldn't call those high-paying jobs.
Well, also, if you don't have any industrial going in, they're certainly not paying any jobs. That's, that's the point, you know, where, where's all the industrial if there's such demand? I mean, we're, we're really involved in the Ridge Road development personally and, and business, and I don't see any demand for industrial use in that corridor. I haven't gotten one question for it, not one, not one phone call. It's all retail.
Can I put my two cents in? Ridge Road is a major road, correct? And I guess to the, I guess the north, so, I guess to the east would be Little Road. You already have a, as you said, a commercial business, now you call that, what was it? Home Depot, thank you. I can't see why those two lots could not be commercial. In fact, if anything else, in my opinion, that's what you would want there, they're on a major road. Light industry, in my opinion, is back off of a road in a complex area where you can have parking for workers and things, and folks like that. To me, this, in my opinion, I can see it as commercial property.
Terry, I'm trying to think if there's another potential compromise here between staff and the applicant. Is there, would staff consider, if it was, if it went to PD instead, this whole thing went to PD, so that you can ensure the remainder of the site stayed industrial, and it was only these two lots that went to retail, through some negotiated form of what could go there, would that be less objectionable to staff?
One moment, please. David, are you referring to making the industrial park PD or just the two parcels?
I'm saying you make the whole thing PD.
Okay.
He doesn't own all the property.
But staff can, the board can change land use whether, whether the owners agree to or not. The board can, staff can initiate a PD if they wanted to, to make the whole thing PD, and they could allow retail only on these two lots. The only reason I say that might be a compromise. The only reason I say that might be a compromise is because then it ensures that the integrity of the remaining industrial on the site, but still allowing retail on these two parcels.
Right.
I'm only throwing it out. I mean, if you don't, if you can't, if you have time to think about it, I could think about it, but.
I, I think we would need to think about it, but I think the, the offer had been made in 2018 to do something similar. But it, the, I think it was declined at that time because it would take too long to accomplish sub-area policies, et cetera. To answer the, the question that you had earlier, David, in terms of, you know, what percentage is Home Depot as compared to the rest of the IL area? So the, the IL district, well, it's partially showing on the overhead here. It's a little, it's a little bigger than what you see on the overhead. It's about 115 acres, the entire polygon. And Home Depot, depending on the measurement, whether it's five, whether you measure just, let me see if this actually works. Does this work? Okay. Who's controlling the mouse? I don't know who's controlling the mouse. Right. So the Home Depot site is basically that diagonal line that you see right there. Right. That diagonal line east to the orange or to the red ROR area, that amounts to about 5.9 acres. That's about a five, that's 5% of the 115 acres, so you would basically understand that at that point, there's about 10% remaining for support commercial. By another estimate, if you take the, you know, all the way straight down to the right angle, the areas behind Home Depot, basically, if you include that, that becomes about 9.2 acres, I believe, ish. And it increases the percentage slightly to about 8%, which would mean that about 7% remains. So there is some support commercial available.
So again, the reason I brought up my suggestion though, Terry, is because I don't think the applicant wants to be limited to support commercial because they don't know what that is.
Right.
So the reason I suggested maybe PD would work is because then it doesn't matter how much Home Depot takes up because PD is its own district.
Correct.
You don't have to worry about whether Home Depot consumed any of it.
Right.
It also allows you to ensure that these two changes to retail for these parcels don't set a precedent so that the whole rest of the industrial park doesn't become commercial too, because you, you're, through the PD, you've ensured that that's the only retail.
Just those two lots.
And that, and then you can assure that the rest of it doesn't get an additional 15%. You know, you, you actually, to a certain extent, are preserving, you're potentially preserving more of the industrial land because you're guaranteeing that it's only those two parcels that would become.
Right.
Whereas right now, up to 15% of it could be. I could make an argument, you're preserving more industrial through a PD that says those are the only two you get.
Right. And I believe that's what staff had previously requested, but that request didn't go anywhere.
Well, I guess I lost the applicant. If, assuming staff were to initiate something like that, what is your objection? Because it gets you retail, and it wouldn't be limited to support retail. It could be general retail.
Well, you know, David, I think the question is, how complicated do we make this? You know, the rest of these.
Steve, I'm trying to come reconcile.
No, I understand that, but just.
If there's two policies that the board has adopted here, then I'm trying to figure out a way to get you retail that's consistent with these two policies. And I haven't heard any argument, and with all due respect to you, Steve, you came here, and I'm not saying you had time to look at it, but somebody has to explain how changing these two retails is consistent with these two policies. And I think there's a way to get there through P.
Which policies?
1.4.4 or 1.8.10.
We tried that a number of years ago in this project, and after two years, three years, I guess it was, of finally getting site plan and plat approval, and those were discussions that were had with what those particular uses, those support uses would be. But the point is that the rest of it has all been sold off as industrial sites. We've got 30 lots in there. These are the two that we're asking for.
Steve, you have no way of controlling that. If they came in, I'm just being honest with you, you can't be restricted now because you don't own some of them, right?
That's correct.
So if somebody came in for a McDonald's on one of those lots, I don't think staff could stop it, as long as it was under the 15%.
Well, if you think that there's going to be a commercial venture like that inside the middle of an industrial area that's.
I'm not saying it's inside, I'm saying right behind the two that you're converting to retail. There could be, easily be something next to or right behind with.
There's a 90-foot major transmission line right through the middle of all that also. I mean, it just, the likelihood of anything like that, David, is just, I think we're jumping through hoops that really shouldn't be necessary. And, yep, before I forget it, I want to, I want to comment on one of the things that Mr. Girardi said there. You know, you talk about employment issues. If these are commercial, under what is allowed in the industrial, that we could put in there if we could ever find a buyer to do it, is that going to have some type of a major impact on, on the economics of that project? It's not going to have a darn thing to do with it. It just, those numbers are skewed based upon large projects that would have, generally speaking, this is, this is very unique in the sense that we're talking such, about such a small percentage, and we're talking about it being surrounded by commercial on Ridge Road. I mean, it just, when you boil it all down, you look at it like that, I don't see that there's any logical answer other than.
Steve, you have to explain to me what the problem is with the PD suggestion.
I'm sorry?
What is the concern that the PD is suggesting? It still gets you general retail. I'm not just saying support commercial retail, I'm saying you get general retail on those two parcels under a PD.
Applying for, for the, just those two parcels?
No, I'm saying a PD that covers the whole park.
Well, you're going to have to, the county's going to have to initiate that because we've already sold the vast majority of those lots.
That's why I asked Terry the question, if that's something that could be done. I don't know if he's willing to initiate it or not. I mean, I guess we'll ask Terry.
What if the other property owners object?
Well, it wouldn't change their.
They'd be industrial now. I mean, it's not changing. They're still, just ensuring they stay industrial is what it's doing. Steve is saying they intend to stay industrial, so I don't know why they would.
What I could see, though, I could foresee is, okay, well, the applicant wants this commercial allocated to him, and then one of them coming in and going, well, why don't you allocate some to me because I'm having a problem developing my lot too?
But that's exactly staff's concern, is that they want to make sure that if they provide retail on these sites, the rest of the park doesn't become retail.
The rest of the park? I, I don't know how that's possible.
The IL land.
The what?
If he, if he changes the land use to comm, that only affects those two sites, that has no impact on the remain, the develop, remainder of the development.
It does, because they get their own 15% retail.
I, I don't understand that logic, David. If, if you're saying that the 15% would apply to what's left, then how come we're aggregating over there with that, that is industrial, that's in the zone, Home Depot?
Well, Terry said that would be 5% of the.
Well, so then, if that's the case, then we should come in for 15% commercial of everything around there that touches it that is industrial. That just, that just doesn't fly.
You, you could today get 15% support commercial. That's where we started this conversation.
With everything that Home Depot has there that's IL? And frankly, that's something I would want to research.
Terry just said that's 5% of, that's 5% of the land.
I don't know how they get C2 on a, on an industrial lot then, whenever they did it. I mean, we'd have to go back through the records to find that out.
They may have counted it towards the 15% support.
May what?
It may, staff may have counted it towards the 15%. I don't know.
Well, the whole thing, that, that shopping center was all under common ownership, and it was sold off in parcels, you know, there's multiple restaurants in there.
Steve, staff, that also, the PD cures that problem because you don't have to include the Home Depot in, in the PD. You could just, the PD could say, those two sites are retail, the rest of it's industrial. You could just ignore the Home Depot problem. You don't have to include the Home Depot in it.
But I appreciate that, but I'm trying to understand the concept of, of doing a lot, of add, making us add in the Home Depot as far as the 15% that you're concerned about then, and not dealing with it just on our parcel. I, I just, I don't understand that.
Because staff is saying that they, when they look at the 15%, they're looking at the whole district, not just one parcel. I don't think you'd want them to look at one parcel because that means your little parcels would have to be 85% industrial and 15% retail, which is, I don't think what you want.
Certainly not. Doesn't make any sense.
So it actually does make logical sense that they're looking at the whole district. But Terry's saying that even if you include the Home Depot, that's only 5% of the land.
Well, I wonder how much of that was IL when, when that was zone C2? Was it just that piece? I don't know. You know, there's, there's been a history.
I don't know, but I'm, but I'm, I still haven't heard why the PD is objectionable to you.
Why what?
Why the PD is objectionable to you if it gets you the retail uses that you want.
Well, let me ask you this question. What's the physical process of going to PD if they wanted to do that? Do they have to go back through the whole thing again? I mean, I think that's what they don't want to do.
Well, I mean, I guess I can hear from Terry whether staff is willing to initiate something like that.
So who would, you're saying that potentially staff would initiate it?
Well, I don't, I'd have to see if Terry's willing to do that. I don't know.
Okay, well, let's assume that he is. I got 26 or so other landowners that I've got to convince them that this thing that the county's doing to them will be in their best interest. You know, I'll be back here in five more years trying to get this stuff taken care of.
The PD would give them the same uses they have under I-1, IL and I-1, other than the retail.
I, I think that that's hoop that we shouldn't be made to jump through. I think we, we think.
Steve, I don't know how I could possibly defend this, this proposal as being consistent with these two policies. If you've got a written explanation about why it is, then I think you need to produce that.
Well, I couldn't, I couldn't do it in 10 minutes, David.
All right, but I'm saying then maybe we need to continue this so you can provide that explanation, but I am concerned.
The problem is, is it's the, there's a presumption in the policy that because a job is in an IL land use, that it pays higher than something that's in a comm land use. And I don't think that's a correct presumption, and I haven't seen any shred of evidence presented here today to back that up. I'm sorry, Mr. Engel's not here to answer the questions, but all I have in my file is an email. And again, I go to the DEO website, I look at the 15 top employers in this county, and not one of them is industrial. I'd like to have some, but they're not there.
Mr. Moody, if you don't like the way the policy is written, then you would ask the board to take the policy out of the comm plan, but it is there. You can't ignore it. You can't ignore the comm plan. That's not what this L body does. So either somebody's going to have to produce an argument that this change is consistent with these two policies.
Or we vote on it.
Or, with all due respect, Mr. Booth, I'm not going to let them vote on something that's inconsistent with the comm plan. That's not, that's, that's, that's against state law. If you've got an argument that's consistent with these policies and they agree with you, fine, but you have, you've not produced anything that says it's consistent with these two policies. I understand you didn't have time to do it. I'm not blaming you. Okay? But somebody has to produce an argument that it's consistent with these two policies. Or we look at PD, which I don't think would have this problem.
I don't think Terry answered your question about whether he would initiate it.
Well, Terry, you want to address that comments, question?
How is it violating 1.8.10? How does this proposal violate 1.8.10? It says they need to ensure that adequate land and transportation capacity is available for present and future high-paying employment-generating land uses such as office, industrial, and employment center uses. Okay? As staff, we know there's transportation capacity because there's a TNA statement in here that says there's, that says there's adequate facilities with or without the flu amendment. So that's been shown. And what hasn't been shown is that if we take this land off the IL role, that we, now we don't have adequate or sufficient amounts of IL land. Well, who determines what that is?
So there have been, the board has commissioned studies through Tampa Regional Planning Council that does show we have a shortage of IL land in the county. Now, I don't know if this one's properly situated or not, but there are general, there's general analysis that's been done by Tampa Regional Planning Council that says we have a shortage of IL land. So whether this is the right location or not is a different question, but I'm not saying it's impossible to demonstrate consistency with these two policies. I'm saying I don't think you have the evidence before you today to do that. So if you're inclined to approve this, I think this needs to be continued so that somebody can develop an argument and data, and Mr. Booth is perfectly capable of doing it, he just didn't have time to do it. He's, I'm not blaming him, he only had 10 minutes to look at this. If he didn't have time to come up with an argument about why this project is consistent with these two policies, then you should continue and let him come up with that argument. But I don't think you could just ignore the comm plan, or say, "I disagree with the comm plan." There might be an argument. I'm not saying there isn't. I just haven't seen it. All I've seen is staff.
I'm saying I haven't heard from staff that there's not adequate IL. And I don't care what the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council says. They're not here to prevent, present evidence either. And they're the same TBR PC that just spent, I don't know how many, how many tax dollars on creating a animation of turning the Gulfview Square Mall into Arlington, Virginia.
Okay. Mr. Pitos, in your opinion, is there adequate land for employment-generating land uses, office, industrial, employment center uses in Pasco County?
No. I would also argue that the harbor's West Market area is very short on employment centers. So this would be another, that would be another reason why.
Mr. Pitos, what's the unemployment rate in this county?
It's, I think, shy of 4%.
It's 3%. What's the national unemployment rate?
Higher than Pasco County.
It's 3.5%. So I don't think we got a shortage of jobs.
Well, I, I think the county policy is not necessarily simply on the quantity of jobs, but also on the types of jobs, skilled labor, and that sort to bring into the county.
Can you bring me a CAD technician? Because I can't find any.
I can't find planning zoning techs either.
Jimmy, can you get an engineer?
Well, to be clear, the policy talks about present and future. So to Mr. Pitos' point, the county's not just looking at what the current job market is, you're looking at the future as well. So again, there may be an argument that this change is consistent with these two policies, but I think you need to give Mr. Booth some time to prepare that argument. I don't, just standing up here and cross-examining Mr. Pitos, I don't think is sufficient, with all due respect.
Mr. Chairman?
The, the problem that I have, though, is that I think a lot of the information that we're getting from, from staff is not supported either. There's no, we don't see any evidence of it. It, you know, there are articles that are being presented by people who either aren't here, don't have any backup support data, you know? Except, what is, what is a support commercial? I mean, that's, what does that mean? The person that was up here making the presentation said that a fast food wouldn't, wouldn't comply with the support. So you're telling me if you have a bunch of workers back here working in the industrial, they won't want to go out and get a Chick-fil-A sandwich for lunch? I mean, that, to me, that's just not thought, not well thought through.
The I-1 zoning district doesn't allow drive-through facilities. So restaurants could be allowed in the IL future land use, but it's the I-1 zoning district that prevents.
Yeah, but we're talking about making these commercial.
Right, but the I-1 zoning district allows restaurants, except for those that have drive-through facilities.
No, that'd be the C3 district says that. That doesn't say that in the I-1 district.
Well, the C3 builds in. The C3 builds into I-1, so it's, it's a.
No, it says I-1 includes any use in C3. And it says C3 that drive-throughs aren't allowed, but it doesn't say that for IL. These are zoned IL.
Regardless, I suspect that staff would, I suspect, they would find that a restaurant is a support commercial use. That a restaurant is a support retail use. I don't think that, I don't think, I suspect that if somebody, if they were, if they reached, if a restaurant came in there and wanted to use it, I suspect staff would find it was a support retail use. Because it's allowed in, specifically allowed in I-1.
I mean, from, from what I've heard today, and maybe this is out of order, but I, I tend to not agree with staff for denial, so I don't know that, I mean, we can sit here and talk about this for an hour, but it sounds like it has to be continued so we can develop some kind of argument that it's consistent with 1.4.4 and 1.8.10, right?
Right, I agree. That's all I'm asking you to do. Don't make a decision that's inconsistent with the COM plan unless you have some analysis to support it.
Steve, are, are you guys, is a continuance acceptable?
What, to the Newport Archie meeting?
Yeah, to the next meeting.
We would prefer that it not be continued, and I would like to make one comment, is that when I read staff's objections now, it appears to me that those are staff conclusions. I don't think there's evidence to back those conclusions up, and I think accordingly, this board can say, "We disagree with staff and we find it is," for their lack of statement as to what the problems are, I would say, and then you could go forward.
I firmly disagree with Mr. Booth, I think you have to, at a minimum, explain why you feel it is consistent with those policies.
Okay, David, if you got, if I could have a few more minutes, I'll just try and go through why I think that it is, and as to the objection under the commercial development, and I don't know the exact definition, it's been many years since I've been involved in this stuff for obvious reasons. It says this site has not been identified as a conflicting zoning, which I would agree with, nor does it meet the criteria for infill determination. You know, you look around the commercial, it clearly is what I would think would fill in along Ridge Road there, like you were suggesting. Um, the neighborhood commercial uses generates less employment, that's the same argument, that there isn't any documentation that establishes that. As to the conversion of important employment locations, quite frankly, that's absurd when you recognize that all the rest of it is, in fact, industrial, and it's gonna be used that way, the lots are conducive to that, the whole thing was built for an industrial subdivision, and to suggest that, that the two lots there, if they had something, a different commercial use than what we could put on there now, would change that dynamic, I just totally think that that's a falsehood. Will contribute more to the county in revenue than it will consume in services. If that was the whole project, I agree with their argument, but as to those two lots, it isn't.
Steve, you don't need to cover that. Steve, I already asked staff to drop that one, so you don't need to-
Okay, sorry about that. Um, and preservation of capacity for employment generating uses, again, if it was the whole thing, I agree, but those two lots, which could be some form limited, limited to support commercial, is not gonna change those dynamics in any way, shape or form. And I think that our argument is valid, such that you can move forward with this request, and we would not want a continuance, trust me, we've had so many issues getting to the finish line, it's been difficult.
All right.
So, I think, I think to find it consistent with 1.1.4.4, you're gonna have to make a determination that these two parcels are not appropriate and compatible locations for I East, for I, basically for IL. And then you'd also have to find it consistent with 1.8.10, you'd have to make a finding that there is adequate land available for present and future high-paying employment generating uses. Based on whatever your personal knowledge is of those two-
1.4.4.
So, 1.4.4, I think to find it consistent with that, you're all gonna have to make a finding that this site is not an appropriate and compatible location for employment generating land uses such as IH, IL, EC.
David, is that lots 2 and 3, is that what you're saying?
Because, because 1.4.4 talks about converting, involves the conversion of EC, IH and IL to different uses. That's what's occurring here. So, the only way I think you can get out of that is if you find that this is not a high priority location or not an appropriate and compatible location for those types of uses.
Why isn't, hasn't the-
And 1.4.10, you said?
I'm talking about, that was for, that was 1.4.4.
Hasn't their inability to, to find a, a user in that category, I mean, proven that, that it's not a location of high probability and high need?
Yeah, and I think, I think what's David saying-
Well, I mean, it's, it's up to you to say whether it's appropriate and compatible, but you're gonna have to determine that it's not appropriate and compatible for EC, I mean, the way I read 1.4.4, you can't convert, okay? It's pretty, pretty strict prohibition on converting those land uses. The only way I can see and get out of it is if you say it's not a high priority site and it's not appropriate and compatible for those uses. 'Cause it talks about recognizing the high priority retaining employment generating land uses in appropriate and compatible locations. If it's not an appropriate and compatible location for EC, IH, IL, then I, you could argue that 1.4.4 doesn't apply. And then as far as 1.8.10 goes, I think you're gonna have to argue that there's already adequate land and capacity, well, transportation probably isn't an issue, but there's adequate, there's already adequate land for present and future high-paying employment generating land uses in this area. If you feel like comfortable making those findings, I think you prob, I don't know how much facts you have to support, but if you think you have those facts based on your personal knowledge of the area, then presumably you could find it consistent with those two policies.
All right. Anybody wanna make that motion?
Let me see if I can get some correct wording here.
Just a minute, one, one second, Peter. So, he moved the motion, do we have a second?
What's the motion?
Uh, what David said. The motion is to find-
Wait, I think their motion is to approve the land use change.
The motion, the motion is to approve the land use change, and we are finding that this is not appropriate and compatible, these two, the two sites we're talking about, not the entire industrial park, we're talking about the two basically out parcels to this thing that front Ridge Road, that those are not appropriate and compatible.
Locations for industrial use.
Yes, for industrial uses, and I think Jamie's argument and the applicant's argument that they've not been able to find the users, and like I said, I myself have done multiple layouts in this place, I know who's been looking at this place. And then 1.8.10?
That there's sufficient-
And I, that there still is sufficient land, we're talking, if we look at, I don't know what the total amount, maybe Mr. Pitos can answer that, what's the total amount of IL zoned land and land use land in this county, but what percentage of it is those two little parcels? I think there's probably more than adequate space left if this goes away. What we wanna do is just finish the motion, so-
You made a motion to go ahead and approve lots 2 and 3 to become commercial, based on your furbyage, and I, do you have a second yet?
Not yet.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, so did you do the last one, the 1.8.10? Yes.
Well, I think what he said, he stopped himself to attack Mr. Pitos, but I think, I think what you were trying to say was that you believe there is adequate land available in this area for-
Yes, I believe there is adequate land available in this area.
For present and future high-paying employment generating land uses.
Even if we only look at the remainder of this particular development. Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second?
By the way, Mr. Booth, that was the analysis I was looking for. So, with all due respect, I didn't realize you didn't have time to do it, okay, but-
I'm good and old, David, I don't think I might be as old as you.
I'm saying I'm doing your job for you up here, give me a little help, but, but, anyway, the motion's been made.
Seconded.
I'll send Mr. Booth a bill later.
He's serious.
And I'll call the motion, as soon as I make one remark. Ridge Road is a, an important artery in that community, and I can see, and I, as I said before, commercial property along that artery there is important, so I call the motion.
All right, so all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign?
No.
Motion carries.
Do we have to make a motion on the county's request to-
And Mr. Pitos, the attack is not personal.
Hey, do we need to make a motion of there to deny this request, or?
Now, you moved a motion to approve the land change, so you don't need to, you don't need to rub it in.
Jumping back to P6, Liam Devine, Planning Development, I'm, I'm gonna ask this again, would you like another staff presentation to refresh our minds?
Yeah, let's go.
Yeah?
We got, we got some people in the audience, I think that are-
I'll, I'll make this one really quick, then. Um, PDD 22-CU 20, it is a conditional use request in RR Sharp Properties LLC 813 Towing for towing services and storage of vehicles in C2 Commercial District. The subject is located on the east side of Land O' Lakes Boulevard, approximately 700 feet south of Cove Lake Place. This is a look at the aerial view, this is a look at the surrounding future land use, this is a look at the surrounding zoning. The subject site is currently vacant and approximately .62 of an acre. The applicant is requesting a conditional use for towing services and storage of vehicles in C2 General Commercial District. The subject site has a future land use classification of ROR. The surrounding area is characterized by commercial and residential development consisting of single-family residential homes. Access to the properties from Land O' Lakes Boulevard and F.D.O. maintained arterial roadway with approximately 120 feet of right-of-way. This is a look at the applicant's conceptual plan, and this is coming with recommendation for approval with conditions as provided in your packet.
Thank you, Liam. All right, and is the applicant present?
Sorry, you went to the wrong plot, spot. Ray Gustafson, Gustafson Engineering, 15030, Surrey Bend, in Brooksville, and I have not been sworn.
All right, another honest man.
Do you swear in your testimony about the use of the L.A. law?
I do. Okay, our client is proposing a towing facility, I'm sure everyone has seen in apartment complexes and along road sides, signs where they say that parking is by permit only or for residents only, and violators will be towed. Well, the applicant is looking to provide that service in this area. He expects that he would be towing maybe, I don't know, maybe 30 to 40 vehicles a week that would, typically, they go in to like an apartment complex late, later at night, 10, 11 o'clock after everybody's come and gone, and anyone that is violating that would, they would then tow those vehicles to their lot where they could be picked up the next day after paying appropriate fees. And that is exactly what we're looking to do here. The office itself is open from 8:00 AM until 6:00 PM, and any collection of vehicles is possible, but has to be done by telephone, and they have to contact the driver on duty, confirm that, again, they do have the vehicle, and that the person asking does have the registration to collect that vehicle, and then they would just meet back at the site to allow that vehicle to be taken. So, there's very little traffic generated by this, maybe five or six cars being picked up a day.
Where are the cars stored?
Uh, in the back half of the, the property.
And that's fenced off?
Pardon, yeah, fenced off, definitely.
Is it screened from public?
Yeah, there is a existing eight-foot block wall along the back, and we would be required to provide a 15-foot buffer, so we would be able to put in a fairly heavy landscape buffer along that wall to supplement it from the residential that is behind us. And north and south of us is commercial, so they would be unaffected.
And you find all the recommended conditions by staff acceptable?
Yes, we did.
So, there would be no, my concern driving through that area pretty much daily, understanding it's a racetrack and south of Lake Patience Road there is, that's probably one of the worst intersections, one of them in the, in the county. Stacking on 41, you're at adequate space to get the truck completely onto the property so there's no backup or any-
Right, yeah, yeah, there's, again, if we're doing five or six vehicles a day, there's not gonna be any stacking.
Right, so there would be one truck in at a time.
There's room to get them in, and, yeah, they can get in, pull up to the, the gate to the back, where we show a security fence, they'd be fully within the property, could even get a second vehicle in there if they had to, and then get them in through the fence for, for storage to the next day.
Okay, yeah, 'cause it, peak traffic times in there, and it doesn't sound like most of your operations may not be within that window, but peak traffic times, it, it is taking your life in your own hands to pull out on that road at times.
And then during the day, it would almost strictly be people picking up their cars, so a car coming in, dropping them off and leaving. Okay.
And what are you gonna do about lighting there?
Um, they will have sufficient lighting to see the site, but we will be using cutoff fixtures to be sure that there is no bleed over to adjacent sites or to the right-of-way.
Would you pick up vehicles that have been fault in an auto accident?
No, not typically.
About typically.
Are they, do you pick up repos?
No.
Okay.
One other comment, it looks like there's inconsistency between the recommended condition and the site plan, the eastern buffer on your site plan says type B, it's actually type C is the recommended condition, just pointing that out.
Yeah, I can actually comment on that. So, this is the site plan that was submitted with the application. During staff's review, we consulted with our site plan review team, so the depth of the buffer, we didn't have an issue with 15 feet, they would have been required to have a type B buffer. However, staff would like to have an increase of shrubbage and trees, so it is a type C, type C buffer that is actually shorter than what a type C buffer would be required. So, type C requirements for landscaping, and then the width is actually 15 feet, which is five feet less than what the type C would require. However, the applicant is actually only required under current code to have a type B buffer. Okay.
Any other questions?
Um, I have another question, so, and I may have missed it, it may be in here, but you mentioned picking up in the evening hours, so does that mean they're dro, what time are they dropping vehicles off at this site?
They're bringing vehicles in possibly after midnight, 10 to 2:00 in the morning, again, five or six of them. There is nothing loud about the operation, they are, they don't drop vehicles, they gotta be as ginger with them as they can.
But is there like backup, you know, the beats from a backup and those kind of things?
Um, really, probably the loudest thing that would be occurring would be, we're intending to use a gravel lot in the rear, and would be the vehicle turning on the gravel. And again, we will be buffering significantly. I've already suggested we go with wax myrtles that will create a, a thick vegetated wall in front of that block wall.
All right, anything else? Let's hear from the public, all right, and then I'll give you a chance to come up and answer anything, bring, they bring up. Okay, who would like to come up and speak? You give your name and address, please, and I think you've been sworn, right?
I have. Um, my name's John Miller, I live at 21541 Trumpeter Drive in Land O' Lakes. That property, my home is adjacent to this project, it's in the northeast corner, adjacent to the northeast corner of this property. So, I'm obviously in, in opposition of this project. I reviewed the zoning code and the future land use, and it's my understanding that according to section 526.1, "The purpose of the C2 zoning is to provide for the orderly development of those uses to meet the community and regional needs for general goods and services, as well of those, as well of those, of a social, cultural and civic nature, and to exclude uses not compatible with such activities." Compatible here is a, is a key word. I looked it up in the dictionary this morning, it says capable of existing together in harmony, designed to work another device- designed to work another device or system without modification. In effect, this conditional use is a modification of the zoning. So I think that's important to take into consideration. The applicant, they're calling it towing service and storage of vehicles, but it's a towing operations center and impound yard. Typically, this is a predatory business. They go after cars that are parked illegally. Typically, in that situation, you have vehicle owners that are very irate that their car is getting removed. And then they pile up in front of the... Wait till the next morning to pick up their car, angry waiting there. And a lot of times, the sheriff's department has to be called in that situation. This is a very intense use that's not compatible with the Swan Lake subdivision that I live in right behind there. Swan Lake is comprised of 54 home sites. There are young families with young children that are playing in the backyard right behind this property, 85 feet away from this buffer. So less than 85 feet from the property line. There are people, little kids playing in the yard, and you're gonna have... And they're proposing putting an impound center, impound yard, right behind these people's fence.
Can you see an aerial photograph to get an idea where he lives?
So this is an extremely intense use. So the compatibility is my primary concern. It's an increase of noise and commotion. It's a 24-hours-a-day service. So while they're there from 8:00 to 5:00, or 8:00 to 6:00, whatever the gentleman just mentioned, they're towing in cars, and I think that's a very conservative estimate, five cars a day. I fully expect it to be more than that. It's a very lucrative business, they tow cars all the time. So people show up, they have to call the sheriff's department because they're waiting there. It's creating loitering, create potential problems along a very congested roadway at 7:00 in the morning. There's no signal in the vicinity of there. So I think it creates problems with transportation as well. But my primary concerns are the noise, the commotion, safety issues, and the fact that there are children nearby. It's just not a compatible use. And then the other issue is appearance. I went to this company's website. What I saw on that website is deplorable. This is a junkyard, is basically what it is. And, you know, what's happening along 41, it's an area that's in transition. Thank goodness, the properties along there are transitioning, and buildings that are interim uses are getting torn down and something else is being built on them. Because plenty of the properties that are there are eyesores, but it is in transition, and there are very nice, well-maintained properties that are along the road as well. So I beg of you to please take into consideration compatibility, and I ask you to not approve this proposed conditional use.
Can we have the URL for the website?
Thank you very much for coming. Are there any questions of this person?
I'd like to see the website.
Okay.
TowingforTampa.com.
Hello, gentlemen. My name is Thomas Larkin.
Just one second, we're trying to get this website up.
I don't want to... I want you to get your full lot of time. They have a pending question, let them finish that.
I'm over here looking at Mr. Moody's shoulders.
Well, is there any way staff can just put it up there so everybody can see?
Yeah, that's...
Can we ask the gentleman what particular page we should be looking at?
You said it looked deplorable, that's what I'm wanting to see, or not wanting to see, but...
I think that's a better thing to do...
Sir, can you come up to the podium, please?
I did quite a bit of research on it, actually. It may not be on this particular website, but if you go to Google Streets and Maps and you just go into it, it's in the northeast university area of Tampa. There is a property, and you'll see it. It's not what you want in a residential neighborhood.
If I could, I have photos of the existing company that you guys would like to look at.
You'll get your chance here, there's a procedure we gotta follow.
Wait till you get your turn up there.
So if you can go on the... To the street scene, if you click on that little map right there, should be a little guy. Trying to think here. Street view up there in the... If you can see, if you can get from the street, you can see what I'm talking about.
And you're saying this is the petitioner's property? That's not your property?
What's the address?
813...
You're not 813 towing?
Yes. 1112 East 112th.
Okay, that's the one I looked at. Right there, click on that blue truck right there.
Can you open up that photo?
So that's not what I want in front of my house. It's not what I think any of you want in front of your house. It's not what I think any Pasco County wants in a residential area.
So, sir, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
Did you read staff's proposed condition four for this conditional use?
I did.
You did?
The... Can you repeat for me what it is, which area you're talking about?
I read it for you. It says, "All vehicle storage shall be adequately buffered from adjoining properties and the V shed of the adjacent street right-of-way. The owner-applicant shall provide a visual barrier in the form of an eight-foot-high opaque fence along the perimeter of the vehicle storage area. All stored vehicles should be located within the visual barrier area." And then there's another condition five that says, "Vehicles stored on site should not be stacked or otherwise stored in a manner that would increase vehicle height to exceed the height of the visual barrier."
I understand that part. The issue there is that...
The reason I asked the question is because I don't know if the site you're showing us was developed under conditions such as four and five.
It really not?
Well, typically not. As you can see, it's not. But typically zebras don't lose their stripes. And this is an example of what they do, how they operate, and I think it's a prime example of how this property would operate. Listen, they're not even putting in pavement. They're putting in a modular building. This is like rolling out your carpet and starting up business. This is not a permanent facility.
I understand, but I think if they built something similar to what we see on our screen, it would violate condition four, staff's proposed condition four and five.
And then we would be in the situation where we would have to call into code enforcement to get that straightened out.
If that happens, they lose their conditional use.
Right, yeah.
That's why it's a conditional use.
Right.
Now, you raised some other concerns, which I don't know the staff, you know, in terms of hours of operation and noise, which the conditions don't specifically address. But in terms of visual, I guess I need an explanation from you about why, if they comply with condition four and five, that doesn't address your concern.
Well, you're still going to have noise. You're still going to have...
I said, I said that noise is a different... I'm asking from a visual, how it looks.
Well, from my house, it may not be visual directly from there. But if I'm driving to my house along 41 and I see that, or if I go to try to sell my house and they see that, they will think that I'm going into the ghetto.
Okay, but this says they have to protect... It has to be a barrier not just from adjoining properties, but also the adjacent street right-of-way. The reason I know this is because I asked staff to add this condition. Because our board has raised concerns about the ability to see vehicle storage areas from the road right-of-way. And I made a comment to staff that their buffer needs to include a buffer from the street right-of-way as well, not just the adjoining properties.
Well, I understand a buffer, it's 15 feet. But that doesn't protect the safety of the adjacent neighborhood. So visibility is one aspect of it, I understand. You cannot see it as clearly as an indirect visibility from my yard. If I had a two-story house, I'd be able to see it. I don't have a two-story house. But it is definitely a safety issue, a noise issue. People work, it's gonna be 24 hours a day with that fence opening up. There's angry people coming in there.
I want to be clear, my question was, I wasn't asking about noise or hours of operation. I acknowledged that that may require additional conditions. My question, since you're showing us a picture of what the other site looked like, my question is, if they comply with conditions four and five, doesn't that prevent what you showed us on that picture?
Depends on how high the fence is.
Eight feet.
No, it doesn't, it wouldn't.
You should say he can't stack the cars up so that they're not visible over there.
Right, they can't, yeah.
What about a semi-tractor trailer?
It says they can't be stacked or otherwise stored...
It wouldn't be stacked, it's more than eight feet tall.
Or otherwise stored, that would increase the vehicle height to exceed the height of the visual barrier. So they... I'm reading five, and Liam, you tell me if I'm reading it wrong. They can't have any vehicle that's over eight feet.
Okay, that is correct. Is a semi-tractor trailer over eight feet?
If it was, it would violate condition five.
How are they gonna get it in there?
They wouldn't be able to. The way I'm reading condition five, they can't have a vehicle that's over eight feet in height.
Okay, so basically, we're gonna have to have cameras on the property to be able to see if they're violating things.
Code enforcement could easily go out there and see if they have a vehicle that's over...
But in the middle of the night, I won't be able to do that.
Well, through the day, they would. Well, then, the code enforcement will accept photographs. If you have a photograph that shows that they got vehicles higher than the height of their fence...
Okay, I understand your point.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
There's a structure or business or something just south of that piece of property they have. I see approximately five, six, seven boats out there.
Yes. That is a marine retailer.
And they don't cause the same kind of problem with noise when they lift on engines or anything like that?
No, that's a retail business.
It's a retail business, they don't do any repair work there?
Yes, they do repair work at CJ Marine, absolutely.
Okay.
But it's not a towing business.
Tow boats in and out?
Not with tow trucks. Not with violent people.
Okay.
That are angry because their car was towed.
We can debate, but I'm not going to.
I'm sorry?
Nothing. I've done asking questions.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want to give your name and address?
Thomas Larkin, 3703 Swan's Landing Drive, Land O' Lakes.
And you've been sworn.
I'm sorry?
You've been sworn.
I have been.
Yeah.
If I could supply the motion to accept.
These are examples of the current business that is wanting to move into this location.
You have a motion to receive and file?
A second. Yeah, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
The only other point I would like to make is that, according to the Laker newspaper, one of the pet projects at the Pasco County Commission has been on this past year, is eliminating used car lots that pop up due to the appearance and due to their business that they do. And as you look at these pictures, that's exactly what this looks like.
Yeah, I don't know that I find that relevant because of the conditions that have been placed on the property.
It's also required to get site plan approval to be a car lot, so that would put them also in violation of land development code and zoning code.
If you look at those pictures, that's what's coming.
Not based on the conditions that are required.
Sir, you have to understand, this site, first of all, it looks like it was permitted in a different county.
Right.
I see no evidence that they imposed conditions similar to what our staff is proposing for this site. I mean, there's no opaque fence. All the cars are clearly visible from the adjacent property and probably the road right-of-way. There's effectively no bufferings, and your Mr. Moody's probably cracked. It doesn't even look like it went through any kind of site plan approval. So I'm not sure if this is a legitimate comparison site to what's before the planning commission today.
That's how they do business now. When you look at the location, where they're gonna be pulling cars in and out of, you're gonna be able to see them from the street.
But the counterargument would be that staff saw how they were doing business in Hillsborough and decided to impose conditions to make sure they don't do business the same way here. You could argue, you could applaud staff for making sure that they didn't do that here, but saying that's the counterargument.
So you would need more evidence that originally they were set up with conditions that are not meeting their...
Fairer comparison would be another site that had similar conditions, and they were violating those conditions, and you could see the cars and all the equipment and...
And I'm sensitive to the other gentleman's statement about this area transitioning, he's absolutely correct. And, you know, when I read these conditions, because I live generally in that area too, but I don't think that's a fair representation of the conditions that are being enforced on the applicant in this particular case. So you're not gonna see cars from the road. It's all gonna be shielded, there is a buffer in the back, so I don't know that that's a fair comparison.
So you... What their application is, they're gonna be doing business differently than they do existing now in the location in Tampa?
Based upon the conditions that are being required of staff, yes.
If they don't, code enforcement will shut them down.
Right.
So...
Or revoke the conditional use.
They'll use it, yeah, they'll lose it.
Not here to badger or argue with you. Just presented the pictures. I don't speak for all 55 homeowners in Swan Lake. I can speak for a majority of them. They don't find this compatible or appropriate on 41 in front of their neighborhood.
Can you help me out with looking at the picture up there? I indicated about the boat store.
You see the property line that would be at back of their property, and the homes on the east side of that? That's a 55-home neighborhood.
But what about the business that just south of that?
Which one's yours?
Boat sale store, boat repair business.
They're concerned about the overhead lighting that will go with the lot. They're concerned about the noise.
No, 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 can you help me out, please?
Sure.
There's, you see the photo of the boat sale store? There's a piece probably just to the south, just down, down one more block. Can you tell me what that business is?
Which one you put?
It's a real, very thin, narrow strip in there.
It's CNC Marine, huh?
That's a place that they sell bait.
Sell what?
They sell fishing bait.
Okay.
They sell trailers for either small boats or watercraft.
Okay, thank you. What about the large brown building there? What is that business?
Which one?
Just south of you.
On the big roof there.
That's an office.
Commercial office?
Yes.
Professional office, is that what I heard?
Yes.
Where's the entrance to the neighborhood?
Further south. Are you familiar with Sugar and Spice Daycare? Right there it is.
So you have a daycare center right there on the corner, correct?
Correct.
And then you move in, okay. So basically, one, two, three, I see four, five businesses already basically along your line there, property line.
And they are quiet businesses? They don't... None of them are open past 6:00 during the evening. None of them are having cars dumped off at all hours of the night.
I understand, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so one more?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I need to be sworn in, I need to get sworn in.
Name first.
Can you swear on testimony about the...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so your name and address?
My name's Mike Ford. I live in the subdivision, Swan Lake. Address is 3711 Swan's Landing Drive. I heard a couple comments that I want to applaud you for. First of all, that is CNC Marine with the boats that you're talking about, and they do store boats, they do work on boats. And he's generally closed by 5:00, 6:00 o'clock, he's open for bait on the weekend. This gentleman over here obviously lives and drives up and down 41. So in the future, I do want to encourage this board, yes, it's a mess. We've been left behind. I've been around since 1990... We've been left behind. I've been around since nineteen ninety-nine. We watched the east side develop, watched the west side develop, you guys are in the middle of all those decisions. I watched forty-one, three lanes wide. I watched the railroad stay, I watched Sanders, which I used to teach at, go down and rebuild. I watched swampland become neighborhoods. Lake Patience, I watch an accident once a day, if not three times a day. And eventually, this group is gonna have to put a traffic light there, there's no way. So some of the concerns that have been raised with the commentary, yeah. There's too much traffic on that road, we can't support it. That flyover should have been here twenty years ago. All of Conerton, none of it should have been developed until the flyover fifty-four and forty-one. Is most of the towing probably in this business gonna be at midnight, one o'clock, two o'clock? Yes. The gravel road probably does make a little bit more noise than it should. It sounds like you guys have consciously done your due diligence and provided the eight-foot bushes. The staff, looks like there's a frontage of the fence, hopefully with some kind of, if it's chain-linked, some kind of visual that will make it more aesthetically pleasing to the eye, or some kind of stockade.
Cannot be chain-linked, it's actually prohibited by...
No wood or chain link.
Right, okay. I did, I read it quickly, but I saw that there was a fencer, yes. So I think anybody can agree going up down forty-one from fifty-four all the way to fifty-two, and we have more development coming. It needs to be cleaned up, it needs a good kick in the butt, okay? So as these nineteen-twenty hotels go down and they get remodeled, and as things go. Now again, the word temporary came out today, so I don't know. He might be in business for a year, might be in business for five years. The land use may change or whatever. But all I can say to you is, I encourage you to continue to let's improve forty-one. The middle of the county has been left behind. Forty-one has been left behind, and there are things being built. Conerton can't keep increasing, fifty-two can't be increasing. You get, I heard earlier in the meeting, Ridge, Ridge Road Extension, you guys all know the fifty-six. We need to do something about forty-one, okay? At the end of the day, the issue in front of you right now, yes, I have a few neighbors here that are opposing this. I am not excited about it, okay? But I do appreciate the preliminary work that you've done to try to make it a little better situation. And again, I don't want this gentleman to think, hey, we're completely opposed to his business. But I hopefully consciously, he's hearing enough today to understand, look, we can't hear tow trucks beeping in the middle of the night at two o'clock in the morning, you know, as someone's getting repo'd, and then, you know, someone's getting angry and coming after, okay? So, and the other comment I will say, and I know I'm out of time, is, yes, I agree with you. It's pretty sad that the employer I used to work with, which is a school board, and Publix being the number two, that's not good, okay? So we are a suitcase community to the jobs which are south. Except for everybody in the last two years that's working from their underwear from home.
School board's number one.
That's what I'm saying.
Yay!
But Publix is number two, so what does that tell you? The hospitals are probably number three.
I thought we were done with that.
County commissions probably in the top block.
You already approved it.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Is there anyone else that's here to speak? All right, would the applicant like to respond?
Well, I do have a question for the applicant.
Okay.
So sir, you were sworn.
Eight one three towing?
Yeah, you, you were sworn earlier, right?
No.
Oh, then you need to swear.
Please swear or present something in your bag to the students of the ground.
Okay, so we just need your name and address.
Christopher Graub, owner, eight one three towing service, two eight five zero seven Lindenhurst Drive, Wesley Chapel.
Okay, so I just want to make sure you understand the conditions that staff imposed on you in terms of the the visual barrier. You do understand that the way this is worded, you cannot have any vehicle that exceeds eight feet in height.
Yes, I understand.
You understand you have to comply with that?
Yes.
Okay. And then my second question for you is, are you in any way willing to limit your hours of operation? Because one of the concerns they're raising is the towing of vehicles with very late hours of the night. Is there, is there any, anything you can offer them in terms of hours of operation that you agree to?
Well, we're required to be open per the Florida statute from eight AM to six PM, our office hours. We're a twenty-four hour business on an on-call basis. So what we do, as far as private property towing, we go into communities and by contract, and they ask us to remove vehicles that don't belong there. I.e., without a permit, parked in the fire lane, parked in the road. In Pasco County, the county ordinance is not, you can't park in the street. So that's a major reason why Pasco County needs our service. So we're trying to expand into Pasco for that reason. As far as limiting the hours, there are a few things that are put into place to limit people from coming after hours. There is a fifty-dollar after-hours release fee. That's a deterrent for people to come at nighttime to pick up their vehicles. At the same time, it deters people from being angry in the moment, gives them time to cool down, come back in the morning and pick up their vehicle, and it's still cheaper. So that's an after-hours deterrent fee that's imposed in ordinance and the Florida statute.
Are you one of the towing operators that contracts with the sheriff's department or not?
From where?
Like, sometimes the sheriff contracts with particular towing companies to
No.
tow vehicles that are illegally parked or crashed, whatever.
That'll be a rotation operator, we're private property, just private.
So you don't tow accidents, you only tow, like, somebody's parked illegally on private property?
Yes, we don't tow accidents unless we get a private call for an accident, which is rare. Usually that's taken care of by the police department on scene with their rotation list, which we're not on.
So you're saying sometimes you're towing from private property at three o'clock in the morning?
Uh, they, they contract us usually from ten PM till about five in the morning. When people start getting up, you know, kids go to school, so they don't want us in there after that. But they contract us during those times to look around for vehicles that are parked in the road or double parked.
You see, they, who's contracted?
HOA communities, the HOAs, they contract us. Apartment communities, they contract us, private apartments.
So you don't have any contracts with the county or law enforcement?
No, none. Yet.
Do you, does your operation typically comply with the applicable noise ordinances of the jurisdiction?
Oh, yeah. All our trucks are, they're idle speed, they have a idle speed, um, Dura coating on the interior of the motors, they're very quiet. And our clamps that hook onto the wheels of vehicles, they have a rubber grommet in between both of them when they snap back, it's buffered, the noise is buffered. Instead of a clink, two metal sheets hitting, it's a rubber in the middle that stops it from, you know, clinking.
So I guess my comment to the planning commission is, or my thought is, it's gonna be difficult to regulate hours of operation on this without basically destroying his business.
Right.
So I'm not sure that is worth discussing. But you could, we do have standard conditions that require compliance with the decibel levels in our noise ordinance that aren't currently in these conditions, that you could add. The advantage of putting them in the conditions, and you might ask, well, if it's in the noise ordinance, why bother? The advantage of putting them in the conditions is that if they violate the noise ordinance, it could be a basis to revoke the conditional use if they're violating the decibel levels and the noise ordinance. But that's up to the planning commission. I'm not saying you can't impose, you have authority to impose hours of operation. But from what I'm hearing from the applicant, it may be difficult for him to operate his business with that restriction. But it's up to the planning commission.
Can I ask one question? So you mentioned that your hours of operation are eight to six, but there's a fifty dollar after-hour recovery? So is it eight to six, or you accommodate people that are coming in to get their cars after six o'clock?
If they want to pick up, let's say, let's say they pick, their car was towed at twelve PM.
Okay.
Before lunchtime.
Mm-hmm.
And they didn't find out because they were out of town, so they, you know, they want to, they come into town at seven thirty PM, they find out their car's not there, wherever they parked it, without a permit. They say, hey, my car got towed, I need you to come, I need you to come and release it for me. The first thing we ask is, are you the registered owner? We have access to the DMV system, so we know if they're the registered owner or not. So we verify that before they come, so they don't just show up and then it's a complete waste of time. So we also have to advise them that there's a fifty-dollar after-hours fee to pick up after, from anywhere after six PM to eight AM. So that usually deters them to come in the daytime. Did I answer that right?
Yeah, I, I guess where I'm going with is, I mean, can't, can't you just say your hours of operation are eight to six as far as recovery goes? I mean, not the actual processing of vehicles and the like in towing, but I think that'll speak to the gentleman's concern about potential safety issues and, and law enforcement involvement if there is an irate customer or something like that, you know, if you're in the daytime, it's, it's, you know, there's...
Generally speaking, one out of a hundred people come at night. They just, they usually just come at daytime. Or after-hours. And also, I wanted to speak on, real quick, the two vehicles that were outside of the yard in Tampa, that's a public right-of-way, all the way down, say about a city block. There's no fencing or buffering in between there. So the two vehicles that were there, they were actually the neighboring businesses' vehicles that parked there, because they have limited parking, it's a mechanic shop. So they weren't our vehicles.
Will you be able to unload all of the cars on your site?
Yes.
Without being in the road?
Yes. We have, uh, they did, they did the measuring for the stacking, stacking rights, the road review. We have to be, I believe it's within seventy-five feet, which accommodates our vehicle and another one, potentially another one if it's a...
No, but I mean, once you, once you get in, I have a repo yard that's near the entrance to my neighborhood, and I don't have any problems with light or noise from their operation. What I have a problem with is they have to load and unload essentially on a residential street and block traffic all the time. Come in there and there's a tow truck unloading.
So I would point out that there's, staff did impose the condition number two, which says there shall be no parking, stacking, loading, or unloading of vehicles on any public right-of-way.
If we could see the site plan again, I, I think that'd back why you actually...
Yeah, a loop.
Yes, has a loop to it, which should keep you from having to back up as well.
It is. If you see the conceptual plan, you'll see that the buffering is there for the, being within the property. And then there's a gate, and then we unload inside of that gate.
Right.
Any other questions?
I, I can understand how the community feels, I listened to all three plus four. And to be honest with you, there's a program on TV that I watch called Auto Mercury or something like that. Once you're old enough, you retire, you start to watch a lot of good stuff. But they have brought up some important issues, and the concern I have are two. One is, to your benefit, is that they already have a lot of businesses to their, to their east. So that's a positive for you in some ways, in my opinion. The other issue I have is, is code enforcement. I don't know how aggressive they would be in, correct me if I'm wrong, but you have to now, when you call and drop the dime on a business, you have to leave your name, phone number, and address, or at least something like that now. It's no more a silent call.
That's an accurate statement. The only exception would be if code enforcement themselves are out there.
They see it.
I guess the code enforcement officer is not subject to that. I mean, if they happen to be driving by and see a violation, but if you're calling to complain, yes, you have to give your, there's no such thing as anonymous complaints anymore.
That's state law, right?
It's a state law, the county did not do that.
I, I understand the concern, you know, when you have cars viewable from the street, but my intention is to take all the precautions to make sure, you know, it is, it looks like a reputable business.
I think it's only fair to be courteous and respectful to the people who have your property line in the back of your property. Homes are back there. That's the concern I would have for those of you who do. So I didn't want it to look like the, like the other photos we saw, you know, starts looking like that, they have, I think in my opinion, a legitimate complaint.
Yeah.
That, that part of fifty, forty-one, I'm sorry, forty-one there, I think somebody called it nineteen-twenty hotels, I think back then they were called courts. They didn't have hotels or hotels, or motorhomes, yes.
Motor courts.
Yeah, courts, so...
How often do you pick up a car and then nobody claims it?
Hillsborough County, that's more prominent. Pasco County is because of the, they're not parking in the road and not having enough space, it's not very prominent. I would say fifteen, ten percent of the time.
When that happens, how long do you have to hold on to that car?
Uh, the car would have to stay in our possession. We have to send a lien letter within the five days, and thirty days after that, so it's a total of thirty-five days.
Then what happens?
Then we relocate it to either another holding yard in Tampa. We have a lot in Tampa, Zephyr Hills, Holiday, either one of the other ones, it's not a big lot, so we need our space. Either that or go to the junkyard and get rid of it. To make space. So I'm a Pasco resident, so I understand, you know, neighborhood's looking nice, I live in Wesley Chapel, there's not much. There's a lot of traffic going on now, but I understand you want your neighborhood and your property values to stay high, I totally get that. I'm a private person, you know, I'm gonna make sure it's clean, operable, no oil on the ground. But the, you know, landscape buffering, what everybody would like to see.
Well, I'd be the first person to stop and take a picture if you're not in compliance, so it's like, I drive that road, I drive that road constantly, so it's, you know...
I'm the owner, I'll be there.
Fair warning.
Okay.
Okay, anything else you'd like to bring to us? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
So just by way of example, there was another application on earlier in the agenda that got continued that had a condition that says something to the effect of noise emanating from the operation shall not exceed sixty-six DBA between the hours of seven AM and seven PM on weekdays. It should not exceed fifty-five DBA between the hours of seven PM and seven AM on weekdays and all hours on weekends. Such noise levels shall be measured at the closest adjacent residentially zoned property line. I'm just saying it has to be that exact wording, that's its, that's its example of one of our standard conditions that's attempting to address noise.
Right.
I'm saying you have to impose that, I'm just saying if that's, if you were, Liam, does that sound like what we would do?
That sounds like our standard condition. We, we can certainly add that without an, an issue, because that's already...
I don't want you to do that unless they vote to do that, but I'm just giving you a flavor of what we have imposed in the past to deal with noise.
That is also required by our code of ordinance, but I, as you stated, that it would be able to be enforced. I would also like to add, there is a condition here about code enforcement being able to be allowed onto the property to perform routine inspections. So if there is a code enforcement issue, code enforcement is not restricted on enforcing this conditional use.
Okay. Well, do I have a motion and a second, and then we can have a discussion? I'll move to approve item P six.
I'll second that.
A motion and a second, and now further discussion.
Yeah, I guess just first, this one's difficult because we've talked about, you know, we've heard from everybody about compatibility, about hours of operation. We've heard about screening. We've also heard, and a lot of people have talked about how the forty-one corridor is an area in transition. I guess what I'm struggling the most with is, is I don't know that the development of this parcel, the way it's being proposed to be developed, is transitioned in the correct way. I know there's requirements for screening. The way I read the conditions, that they could put up an eight-foot tall vinyl fence. You know, I've had several discussions with staff about vinyl fence versus chain-linked fence and screened, and one has one opinion that one's ugly, and I have another opinion that another one's ugly. I mean, I drive past vinyl fences all the time, that a third of the slots are missing. To me, that's ugly. So I, personally, I, I have a problem with, with the screening aspect, with the compatibility with the hours of operation, and and I, I just am not sure that this is the correct user... And, and I, I just am not sure that this is the correct user for the site if we're trying to transition the 41 corridor and the development of the 41 corridor in the right direction, so...
Yeah, well, I mean, I'll just throw my two cents in. I, I think basically my, my feeling is that if we're trying to improve our major corridors, I'm not sure this does anything to improve it. I think it's a important, you know, important operation. A lot of people need the, need the service. I'm just not sure it needs to be fronting on US 41 where we're driving through. And I think one of the people brought up the fact that we're trying to clean it up and bring in, you know, newer, more viable, more customer-friendly operations. And I'm not sure that the, these residents don't have a, a valid argument. I, I have to look at it, if I lived there, would I want it there on the other side of the wall? And I have to say, no, I wouldn't. And, uh, so that doesn't mean it's not proper, I'm just, just the way I feel. And I think that we've got, the staff has done a great job of doing what they can do to protect the, protect the neighborhood. But I still think, you know, when you drive by and you see a towing operation next to a, a nice development, I think it tends to bring down the value of that development. So, you know, I would support this in most locations, but I won't support it on, in that location. So... Anybody else have comments?
So I forgot what the current motion was.
The motion was to approve.
Okay, as is.
As is.
Okay. You have a second?
Yeah, I have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
Nay.
Nay? All right, motion carries.
You vote, Peter? I did.
Can we just do a roll call just to make sure we get the vote count correct?
Jamie Gerardi?
Nay.
Donald Anderson?
Yes.
Christopher Paul?
Aye.
Peter Hansel?
Aye.
John Goody?
Aye.
Chris William?
I did not vote, I don't think I voted on this one.
No, you don't. Unless it was a tie.
Right.
Nay.
Uh, it passes, uh, quarter two.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So just for the audience's benefit, this, on this matter, the planning commission is a recommending body. The final decision is made by the Board of County Commissioners. So please make sure you attend the appropriate Board of County Commissioners meeting. Hopefully they heard me.
Hopefully they listen.
Did you fellows hear this, hear about the meeting?
Wait, wait.
Guys.
Wait, gentlemen.
Gentlemen, we were trying to tell you something.
I'm trying to help you.
I just said make sure that you attend the, the Board of County Commissioners meeting because this is not the final decision. Liam, what is the date of the...
Yes, that is correct, October 6th. It is going to the 9/20 as a continuance, but it is going to October 6th.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. All right, guys, is that it, Liam?
That's it for our agenda.
That's all the pain today, huh? Okay.
Fourth. Let's go beat the lightning.
Okay, I guess we're adjourned.
Oh, yeah, we're adjourned. Can you guys vote?